Here.
Brian here.
Phil O'Connell here.
Phil Devine here.
Nick Mobilia here.
Thank you.
So.
Can you bring us up to speed on what's happened since the last meeting?
Since the last meeting, as the board requested, we conducted an informational neighborhood meeting at the senior center on February 28th. At that time, we had probably maybe 80 people who attended. We also had the meeting videotape and it was subsequently posted on the senior center website.
Okay.
It also provided a link to the video to Amy, your administrator. And since that time, you know, we've been since, you know, talking to a few people who have some questions, but not a lot since the meeting. So what I'd like to do tonight is essentially go through the information that was disseminated at the, at the neighborhood meeting because the planning board, I see you have the booklets that were handed out at that time. Strictly up to the board's preference, whether or not they want to hear from the neighbors or whether or not.
We will hear from the neighbors.
Okay.
After your presentation.
Okay. So essentially I'm, I'm just going to go through a little bit of the information that we discussed at the neighborhood meeting, just to bring the board up to speed and to for the benefit of some people who might not have been at the meeting on the 28th, but they may have additional questions. I have half a dozen booklets here if anyone needs one, wants to read along. They're available if anyone wants one. So essentially the project, the project site is located, I'm sorry that you're behind me. But essentially this is the project site highlighted.
Can I ask you a favor?
Sure.
Could you move that back a little bit?
Yeah.
So not to block the view of the people there.
Yeah. How about that? Your folks all have booklets, so.
You can see it? Okay. Thank you.
Sure. I think that's a good idea. But essentially highlighted in blue and your folks follow along and you're in the booklet. Highlighted in blue is the perimeter of the, of the property with the exception that this section, that 137 Lakeview Avenue is also part of the property that we, that we own, not a part of the property. And on this location, you can see Prospect Street, Lake Street, Black Moss Street. This is the town recycling center on this side with the solar field that's up on the hill. And we are in the bottom tier of that location. That elevation is probably about 50 or 60 feet higher than our elevation on the property. And but historically, for those of you who may not know, this property was formerly a gravel operation by the Bonny Sandin gravel group. They've owned this property before we purchased it. They own this property since 1967, thereabouts. This is a 1978 aerial photograph that shows the extent of the gravel operation at that time. And there are photographs before 1978 that show the gravel operation extending into other areas of the property as well. This basically shows you the extent of the gravel removal that was taking place on the site. This again is Lake Street, Prospect Street. At that time, there was a railway that was on the property that was privately owned, wasn't owned by Bonny. It's, there's a long history to that railway that goes back to like the late 1800s. We eventually purchased that railway to get access to both sides of the property. So over the course of time, the property has recovered from the gravel operation because over a long period of time, the area that was previously excavated or mined for gravel eventually grew new vegetation. So this is a 2006 photograph that shows what was left after the vegetation was regrown on the property. So you have Lake Street, Prospect Street, railway, and this wetland crossing that we're using to cross over there. So when we came into the process of acquiring this property, we, we looked at the town's master plan, did some research on the zoning. What were the, what's the available infrastructure of the property? Usually when you're doing a high density project, you need infrastructure, sewer, water.
We have some seats in the front if you want to come in. Sorry, I didn't correct.
So we had, you know, we had to do our own homework with regard to what's the available infrastructure on the site because currently there is no water, municipal water on Prospect Street. From the town of Franklin, there's no municipal sewer in Franklin on Prospect Street, although there is sewer on Oxford Drive across the street, which is basically collects via a pumping, via a pumping station and pumped up Maple Street to Route 140 as made by a force main that was installed maybe 10 years ago. We looked into possibly upgrading that system and putting a new force main in, but subsequently we, on research or when we acquired the railway, it gave us the opportunity to extend the sewer to the site from Bellingham that will be pumped to the one socket treatment plant. I'll go over that in a second. But so when we first acquired the property, we had a certain amount of zoning that was allowed on the site. One of those the zoning that was in place at the time when we bought the property allowed for multi-unit townhouse development on the site with a special permit. I don't know if Phil O'Connell will remember this, but I'm not a big fan of townhouse development. I prefer to develop single family homes, detached single family homes. So we during COVID, this is going back to when COVID carrying time in 2021, we had some various discussions with regard to doing a detached single family development with a little bit of a assisted living component, which was pristine as that, as would really cater to 55 plus age bracket. So when we had that discussion, we were told, but we don't allow single family detached condominiums in Bellingham. So I said, well, let's try to put an amendment into the zoning bylaws that allow us to do this type of project. And I proposed a zoning amendment at more time to add the words, single family detached condominiums. And it wasn't considered, but instead of considering that proposal, the town went the opposite direction and they amended the zoning bylaws to prohibit townhouse development. So as a developer, as a property owner, there are certain regulations that allow us to protect ourselves for value to a property that we purchased based on a certain set of regulations that were since, it changed. And that process allows us to file what's called a preliminary subdivision plan prior to the adoption of that zoning amendment, followed by a definitive subdivision plan, which we obviously filed as well. And that plan is the 21 or I forget, only 1920 lot subdivision that we filed strictly as you've heard before, as a placeholder for our opportunity to preserve the zoning for multi-unit townhouse development. So that's where we started. And this goes back to 2021, we had numerous meetings. We've had subsequent plans. So then we got into, okay, let's try to, I don't know if this was before the zoning amendment or after. We got into some other conceptual type drawings for the site. We sort of split it. Single family detached dwellings on this side, multi-unit townhouses on that side. And in addition to that, we were looking to provide access to the site, multiple access points to the site. This one here happened to be the first one was a single of two, two access to Prospect Street with a continuation of a roadway access to Lake Street. So we did that. And we tried to come up with an arrangement that would facilitate this kind of a development, something that had a mix of housing opportunities. Because one of the things that the town's master plan outlines as one of the goals is to provide a diversity of housing choices and to develop properties that are convenient to transit opportunities that are available, meaning I-495 Franklin Forge Train Station. So we were moving in that direction. But again, somewhere in the process here, the zoning change took place and our focus then became the subdivision and we needed to follow through that process. That process took a little longer than we anticipated. For a variety of reasons, there were some concerns that the planning board wanted us to address, which we, which are obviously part of that multi-unit proposal. So we're in the process of going through that subdivision approval process. And then once that process was concluded, we were able to concentrate now on a new, on a new development, which is the 156 units. Now, Bellingham's, that, that multi-unit development bylaw, the density is measured by how many square feet you have on the property. One bedroom for every 10,000 square feet of land area. So we have 3,100 something square feet of land area divided by 256 units. At the meeting, the other, on the 28th at the senior center, I've got many people that came up to me and said, hey, what about the seniors? They just need a nice house to live in. And we could do 312 one-bedroom houses, if we had to, if you wanted to buy the property by one bedroom per, per unit, you want the 312. But in my experience, it wouldn't be nice to try to do a one-bedroom townhouse. Just aesthetically, just I don't think it would be very appealing. So we're stuck with what is available in the zoning bylaws at this point, which is one bedroom, every 10,000 square feet. You want to reduce density, it's three bedroom units, goes down proportionately. Three bedroom units reduces revenue to the town instead of two bedroom units. You get less units, less revenue to the town. Three bedroom units are more attractive to families with children versus two bedroom units that are more like a first time home buyer or empty nester type buyers. So they were all, there are all elements that need to be balanced as you work with the town to figure out what is the best, what is in the best interest. Now, some of you people may say, oh, but what's been best interest of the town is to just leave it the way it is. Well, obviously that's not an option for any guy. So as we moved along into the process, we, we, you know, we kept, we had a couple of other scenarios where and this is kind of like the, one of the later scenarios. We had several environmental meetings with town officials, department heads. One of the biggest concerns is that public safety, emergency access in the event of unexpected event that would prevent getting access to the property or to the units. So we provided alternative scenarios. One happened to be a concern that had been existing for some time, according to my information, is this Lakeview Avenue roadway. Lakeview Avenue, those of you who live there know all about it. It's a very narrow, long dead end street, runs along the lakes, has only one way in, no way out. Few years ago, the town put a water main down Lakeview Avenue and cut through this property with amisment. And during that time, there was a water main break, I think in 20, no, four, five years ago, there was a water main break. And the people could not get to their houses. They were, they prevented them from getting access. And you know, if there was any catastrophic event, a fire or emergency of some sort, there would have been virtually no way to get there at that time. We offered, or we're offering to make a connection to Lakeview Avenue as an emergency access, emergency access only with a, with a gate that would only be usable by the emergency fire, police and fire, EMTs, you know, to get through one side to the other. This, this was, if you'll see in the package, there's a metal in there that was presented by the former DPW commissioner that suggested that we provide an avenue for that, to make that connection. We don't need to make that connection. We're doing it as an accommodation for what we believe is a public safety issue. And I understand people on Lakeview Avenue do not want any through traffic there. We're not proposing through traffic. We're not even proposing a roadway. They're showing the roadways up to the planning board to determine and the public safety officials to determine whether or not we have the desirable opportunity to take advantage of it. This, this particular sketch here had to deal with, there is a conservation issue, as you probably know. The, the biggest issue with the conservation commission was whether or not they would allow us to use this existing culvert crossing that's there, been there for 70 years. This crossing was what we consider to be the least, the least impactful to the development, to the wetland, to the wetland areas. And in fact, the conservation commission, they're the ones who wanted us to go this road all the way around back out to Prospect Street. So that issue hasn't been resolved yet. It's in litigation, but we're optimistic that practical, the more reasonable approach to this would be to use what's already existing. To do this crossing, just so you know, we're impacting 525 square feet of wells, 525 square feet, less than this room, half of it probably. So we think that's a better opportunity to do that. But then we get into the public safety issues of having two access points to the site from Prospect Street, which is where the county proposal comes from, which is to have have a looping road system from Prospect Street looping through the site, also providing this emergency access out to Lakeview Avenue with a looping road back out to Prospect Street. Now that is typically for any kind of development, it's a requirement when you have lengths of roadways that we have in this development to have at least two ways in and out of the property. So when we thought of laying this out, we wanted to lay it out in a way that did the least amount of impact in this vegetation. So the units that you see here in this cluster of developments primarily in the area that is currently sand and gravel, with no, but if you go there, it's more like a beach without water. It's just vacant land, vacant sand and gravel. If you can see, this is the wetland crossing, which is right here. All this area here, it's all the scrub land that we would be mostly utilizing. There is a portion out the front and down the side, on the side here, where we're using for additional units that we're adding into the project design. So that's how we evaluate the site initially. So when we got to the point that we needed infrastructure design, we needed to provide for water and sewer. The water the water is located, as I mentioned earlier, the town got an easement from the homeowner at 137 Lakeview Avenue. There's a water easement that runs through this property. This is the blue line represents water. So this water line was installed on Lakeview Avenue through 137 Lakeview Ave. And it loops through the town's recycling center, solar field and out back to Maple Street. We have the water main on our property. We're connecting it to the water main. We're, so we solved that problem by purchasing the additional property. And in so doing, that property was part of the initial zoning freeze that we filed when we filed this subdivision plan. So that property was also eligible for the multi-unit townhouses that we're proposing. So that water, I believe is a 12-inch water main, is going to loop through the site. And we haven't determined yet through the DPW where they want it to be looped, whether they want it within the project or in some other direction. But so that solved one of the problems, water. Originally, when we were doing the subdivision, each home would have its own well and septic system. No water, no municipal water, no municipal sewer. Granted, they would be on Tameka lots. And those infrastructure would have to be installed in order to build on those lots. And as a sand and gravel operation, those three, we, we put wells in on all of the lots in the front. We got, we got water at 300 feet coming downwards in there, which is unbelievable. So we did that for these five or six houses on, on Prospect Street. Now, adjacent to the site is a parcel of land that was formerly owned by the same, in the same chain of title that the Bonny property was held in. And this property is now owned by the town under the conservation commission's discretion. I know it's in the shape of a heart, but that's not, I didn't create it that way. That just happened to be the way it lays out. All of these other homes, this is what I recall, the Lakeview Avenue neighborhood, all up on a hill primarily. I don't know how many people have water or not, or, but I'm certainly, I'm pretty sure they don't have any sewer that's on the site and there's certainly no stormwater management within any of those roadways. So all of that stormwater runoff goes into the lake, it's in that direction. If you're, I think the top of the hill is right here, all of this water all sheds off towards the lake. What's highlighted in red here is the, is the old railway, which as I said earlier, the law, the development purchase, the lights, purchase the land that made up that railway. And our intention is to extend the sewer from the pumping station on Cross Street to the site gravity wise, so that anybody that, if the town decided later on that they wanted to provide sewer in that area, they'd be able to do that at some point. My site, we're a little bit lower than the elevation on Black Moss Street, so we will be pumping the sewer up to a manhole so that it would go gravity down Black Moss Street, down Cross Street, if you're pumping station. We have contacted the root socket engineering department. They, they've given us their blessings that they have enormous amount of capacity there to handle this project. Like I said, they have 2 million gallons per day capacity. Our site is basically at 34,000 gallons per day. So provided that we, you know, design and construct this and get permission to do that, we will be providing sewer. During, during the hearing process for the subdivision, it was, one of the major issues is traffic. Primarily the Lake Street, Prospect Street intersection has been the topic of conversation in most part. You know, clearly anybody who's been on Prospect Street, you know, the speed of the vehicles that are there. Nothing that we can do about that. People were driving their cars and we didn't want to go to. It's in Franklin. I don't know what kind of enforcement they do, but there's definitely, our traffic report indicates that they're going about 10 or 15, 15 miles per hour over and above the speed limit that's on that street. I really, I really don't know what to do with that. But one of the things that we can look into and do is to try and make this Lake Street, Prospect Street intersection a little safer. And when I say safer, you know, according to the traffic analysis, they have this crash data that's published. There's only been two crashes there, believe it or not, in the last three or four years. So either people are aware of the situation and they slow down and they take care of making the turns or lucky. But in any case, in 1935, there was a county layout done for Prospect Street and Lake Street. And during that time, the county commissioners developed this intercept, into this redesign of the intersection, but it was never built. Town has control over it. From what I understand, just for some reason, the town didn't undertake it. But in 1986, they decided to extend Lake Street, instead of building this county layout, they decided to extend Lake Street through this property to form a T intersection. The interesting thing about this is that this guy, this homeowner owns this little piece. This homeowner owns this little piece. They put it right through his property. They gave him a variance. To allow him to have an undersized lot. I think the zoning requirement is eighty thousand square feet, I believe he had like sixty seven thousand square feet. We've had conversations about. Whether or not he participate or allow us to do some redesign there. There are other, there are. Two or three different types of opportunities there. But I think. For us, for the town. And for anybody that lives there, it would be a lot nicer if you could see where you were going. And it would be a lot nicer if you had some controls there, allow an orderly. Turning process for. Vehicles. So what we suggested, or what we were suggesting anyways, is that. The brush, this roadway, and by the way. All, all of the work that would need to be done is in the town of Bellingham. There's no. If you talk to the town of Franklin, this is all. In the town of Bellingham, so whatever. Whatever that can be worked out within the town, we're capable of. Getting that, but what we're thinking about is cutting the. There you go. So, these are some blown up photographs of the intersection. This is, this is Lake Street looking toward the intersection of Prospect. You can see when you, you can't, you can't see, you can see what that you can't see around the corner. What it really kind of needs to happen here is that. This needs to be cleared out so you can see oncoming traffic coming in. This is the corner, looking from Lake Street. To Prospect Street. Pretty obvious that. Large trucks can't make that turn because the radius is too tight. They're. Overtopping the stone and running right over the stones. And. If there's a trail coming here and somebody's parked here, it really. Creates a problem for anybody who's in that net. And by the way, you can see that there's no, there's no stop sign here either, there's no. Method of controlling the flow as you go through the property, so here's a close up. Close up property, photograph of that location. But then you look at. Going south on Prospect Street. Towards the intersection. You can see all of this. Area. Just sitting there in the car. At the stop sign, you really, you really can't see, or they can't see. Through that brush, and then you get like right on top of the intersection. So, the long and short of it is that. This area here, all has to be, it all for you to see the intersection, you know, I don't know if you want to see the intersection or not, but. All of this area needs to be cleared. And maintained. For a site distance. For safety. And all of this. As I mentioned, that's, there's a stone wall that's along there. People think that it's part of the scenic road. Oh, town of Franklin. It's not part of the scenic road, it's. Town of Bellingham, through the town of Bellingham. Not in the town of Franklin. But the town does have control. The town does have control over much of that strip of land. Because this is part of the county layout that was. That's been there, so. Between the planning board and the, and the towns and this homeowner here, we can have him use. Participate. We can make a tremendous improvement there. Now whether or not. You know, there are probably other things that need to be done there, there need to be controlled better. Needs to be stop signs, there needs to be signage along the Prospect Street to, you know, to notify people when the intersection is coming up. That sort of thing, but that's. It's one of the issues that came up during the subdivision process that. We fully recognized from, from day one, that needed to be dealt with. And we're. We're prepared to do that, under the scenario that we're talking about. So. I'm just talking briefly again about the Lake Street, Lakeview Avenue access. This is what we blow up, what we're talking about. Which is. An extension, emergency access only, it's like a twenty foot wide. Drive that's suitable for. Emergency vehicles. With a gate. On each end. And. Right now, we're proposing a cul-de-sac in that location. People who have deliveries, trash trucks or whatever that come down that street, I don't know how they get out or how they turn, but. They must be turning in this little gravel area that's at the end there, but. There really isn't anywhere for anybody to turn around on Lakeview Avenue. Unless they pull it to some driveway and make it fit. But there really isn't anything. Available for a turn there, so again, we proposed it because we were. It was something that. Was the town was interested in, that we were. Told, the town was interested in, but in addition to this emergency access. We're also discussing dual access onto Prospect Street. Now, a lot of people will say, oh, why don't you go out to Lake Street? Why do you have to have two accesses on Prospect Street? Well. We did our traffic analysis. Our consultant, traffic consultant says. You know, eighty percent of the traffic is going to Route one forty. It's not going. The other way. So, we made a decision. To keep that part of the property as. The way it is now. Treated and benefited without anything on it, because why put a roadway out to a street where people are going to go back down the intersection and out the other way? It didn't make sense to do that. So that's why. You know, we started out with access everywhere. You know, to sort of spread it out, so that one side wasn't more burdened than the others. Unfortunately. Unfortunately, it doesn't, doesn't really work that way. People, this location. Is. Convenient to. You know, people commuter, commuters that are going either. One ninety five Mass Pike or south, or one ninety five to ninety five, or the Franklin train station. It's not. It's not convenient to go the other way, I don't know what is the other way, but from our analysis. We determined that eighty percent of the traffic is going to go the other way. So that's why we're not. Trying to develop. An access point or a roadway or put units. Off to Lake Street, I mean, we could easily take. We could easily take the units that are going up to Prospect Street. And put them going out on Lake Street. We could take these units. And put them, just extend them all there, put units there, have them go off the Lake Street. Pretty easy to do on paper. But then we're impacting. More. Public zone, wetland issues that we. Think. Would be less advantageous. For the property than what we could possibly do with it, what we would want to do with it. So. We've focused in on this location. On this layout. And the density. We're having a financial analysis done for the town to determine. The questions that were raised. To draw this. There's a tremendous income stream that comes from a project like this. You have a hundred and fifty six units. You're going to sell for five, six hundred thousand dollars a piece, times thirteen dollars per thousand. Plus excise taxes, now it's probably over a million dollars of revenue to the town. Without the town. Having to expend any services, because they're privately maintained. Private, the roads are private. Everything in here is, is maintained by a homeowners association. So it's easy to say the town, well, this is a great town, a million dollars. But there is the offset of a potential school impact. Which, which I will go over, I'll talk about it a little bit. But more bedrooms, you put it in a unit. The more likelihood that you're going to have schoolchildren in that unit. So if you do a four bedroom house, five bedroom house, you're going to have more children than you would have in a two bedroom town. Let's see, the family size and, and the way the families are now. There's a lot of single households, single person households. A lot of divorces, a lot of seniors. And unfortunately. They're looking for a place to live, that nobody, not everybody wants to live. And an apartment paying twenty four hundred dollars a month for a one bedroom apartment, which is usually the going rate for all of these. Types of apartments that you see. On, on one forty right now. Now my cup of tea, we have to continuously, you know, developers always get plunged into, into one basket. Where the union guys trying to. Trying to make a buck. We are trying to make a buck, in my particular case. We're trying to do it the right way, the most responsible way. And. That's how these things. Have evolved. If I could go back to the first proposal that I made, I'd do that if I had to. I haven't been able to get. Any. Putting, you say, with that concept of a development, okay, so. When we're done. When we're done, these are the details, the impact, as we call it, of. The development within the size of the property. So as I said earlier, we have roughly three million. One hundred and twenty four thousand square feet, seventy one point. Seven acres. Of which. Twelve acres. Is wetland. Meaning no building. So the total up, upwind area on the site is nine acres, which is available to. Built. So when you divide the square footage by the ten thousand square feet that we talked about, it's permitted. You come up with three hundred and twelve bedrooms. Divided by two, hundred and fifty six units, that's how we arrive at the density. And as I said earlier, you can go one way or the other, you can go to three hundred and twelve one bedroom units. Or you can go downward and have three bedroom units and reduce it by. Reduce it by, I think, fifty one units or something like that. So after we've developed this property under their proposal, we end up with. Impervious service areas. Roadways, twelve point seven acres. Sidewalks, point four seven acres, driveways, two point two eight acres. And buildings, eight acres total. Developed. Impervious area of fifteen point five acres. So fifteen point five is roughly about. Eighteen percent of the total area. But then you get into. How much. What we call disturbance that we would have to do to build those units, so the units. You can't just put the buildings up and then not do. Other work that's related to those. Units being constructed, so we have a land disturbance. Equation that. That ends up at thirty one point nine acres. Of the seventy one. We calculated the area that the open gravel rate at this point is roughly six point six acres that we've calculated off of. The aerial photographs, so the net disturbance is twenty five or twenty six acres, that's what you're talking about, so. Under our proposal. Thirty nine point eight acres stays, is the way it is. Fifty five percent. Area of the, of the property that will be, remain in an existing situation. To me, when, when you divide a property in a subdivision. You may say, okay, there's only twenty lots, but each homeowner can do whatever they want on those lots. They can clear cut them, they can put barns up, pools up, garages. There's no limit to what they can do, it might be a system of improvement. So. I don't want to keep patting myself on the fact that says our proposal is better than anything else, but there are. Considerations that you need to measure to make sure that. All those things are being considered properly before you. You know, start making conclusions that are not. That are not factual, I guess it's called. So, there was a lot of discussion about schoolchildren.
You know, how much longer?
Ten minutes. That was my opportunity.
That's fine.
One last thing. This is. This is the data from the Bellingham school department, provided to us, it's a ten year run of. Schoolchildren in Bellingham from kindergarten through high schools. Over time. The total school population of kindergarten through three, third grade is declining twenty three point eight percent. For fourth grade to seventh grade is declining seventeen point two percent. And overall, the school system. High school children went up three point three. But overall, the whole school system went down twelve point seven percent over the last ten years. Now, since tw- twenty twenty one. It's kind of leveled off. A little bit, since twenty twenty two, it's kind of leveled off a little bit. I don't know the reason for that, but. It's something to consider, I don't know if they've already closed elementary schools or what they've done yet, we haven't really dug into that yet, but that's. Clearly. We're, I don't think we're going to be adding anything that would require a school to be built. Of any sort, so. So most of the people here have probably heard this spiel before, so. I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman, and ask, they can ask questions.
And I want to add a couple of comments first. He said a lot of things, I want to be clear on one thing, a couple things. He's talking about concepts. The court has not seen those concepts. The only concept in front of us is what is in this book. He does not have any concepts, he might have had meetings with department heads, but they never came to. The planning board in my time of planning. Is that correct, you've been here a long time?
Well, we've had Zoom meetings, not with the planning board, but we had Zoom meetings with the planner, town administrator. And maybe a couple other people early on.
I understand.
It's not in front of the planning.
Just for clarification.
Not in front of the planning, correct.
To present these here.
Right.
We've not seen.
Correct.
Be very transparent, you know, it's, we've not seen.
Absolutely, you haven't seen.
This is the only project we're dealing.
Right.
We also, you said. You use your placeholder. On this property. For the benefit of the residents in town. We did a look at the houses on this development as a placeholder. It took two years to go through. And we treated it like it could have been built. I think some other towns might have, you know, glossed over it. But it was, it was a process.
Absolutely, it took, as I said, much longer than I anticipated.
Yep.
And and we come up with a lot of issues and the issue of the traffic and the intersection was one of those big issues.
Now, in regards to um items raised to see. Um, we will talk about down the road. Uh, stormwater, traffic, and other topics. But I want to ask you one question. And then we'll turn over to public. What has changed in your presentation? Since you met with the neighbors, what have you done based on their input? Have you decreased the size?
Excuse me?
Have you decreased the size or anything?
We haven't made one uh change to the plan.
Okay.
Uh, we simply are going through our own due diligence, we're verifying the availability of sewer, we haven't done. We've communicated with the BBW to do flow analysis, which is important, it's probably a good size to make sure that. Sprinklers system, water pressure is available.
Cause there'll be triflexes, correct?
Triflexes, right. We're in the process of still compiling, yeah, by law requirement for uh sprinklers. So we're going through that process to make sure. What we are proposing to build. Is buildable.
Yep.
We can't get water pressure there to to sprinkler the units, then throws a different monkey wrench into the process. We're in the process of designing the sewer pump. Station. To pump. The sewer out, so that has to be a separate thing, so we're we're doing that process right now. Uh, we recognize that all of these steps that we're going through, the planning board is in town, the peer reviewer is gonna review them. On a individual, I would say, individual basis, completed basis. Because a project of this size has a lot of. Parts.
Yep.
So as we. Hear more about what is concerning to the neighbors or to the planning board or to the town, then we will attempt to address those. At at each meeting.
Okay.
But at this point, we're we're still waiting for. Some uh indication of who the planning board is going to. Hire as a peer reviewer.
That 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 brings up a question we'll discuss as we move forward. But um, I think we're. A little further out on that than you may anticipate.
Okay.
All right. Uh, you also mentioned uh fire and safety. We have both chiefs here tonight. And they'll probably be at most of the meetings as we go through this process. We are allowed from the the veterans in town in regards to traffic, fire, uh water from the um. From the site, as well as all of representatives here from D and W. What we may want to do as we move forward. Is um each night. We will try to um dedicate. A night uh each month to this topic. Uh, with limited uh other items on the agenda. And try to have one or two items that we can all talk about moving forward. So we address stormwater, we we address everything he's talking. And it'll be, it could be a long process. I mean, the process for the homes was about a little under two years. So unless anyone objects on the board. I'd like to turn it over to public, I know you had a meeting. And I like to use the same criteria we used last month. Yes, sir, excuse me.
I have a question.
I did, we'll get to it in a minute. I like to use the same criteria we used last month. I would like to try not to have the same question repeated twice. I know last time it was repeated three times, which I was fine with. Also, um. We'd like to limit. The number of people that ask questions. Everyone have a right to ask a question. But I wanna rotate the people that asked questions in fairness to all of you. If I see the same person, or even women are seeing the same person asking questions, we'll just ask them to, you know. See what they can do to. And ask, to have other people ask similar questions. So I'd like to turn it over to public, yes, sir, can you state your name and address?
Uh, Jefferson Spatter, sixty three Renton Manor. I happened to be at the senior staff meeting a couple of weeks ago. At which time you did your traffic study, people said that three hundred cars are so that they're gonna be coming out of there, we're gonna turn right and go down Prospect Street to four ninety five. And I suggested to you that it's about equal distance between going to the right and to the left, but going to the left, they're gonna go through Bellingham. To the train station and to four ninety five that way. Now, tonight, you just said that the cars are gonna come up and turn left. Which traffic study are we supposed to go by?
I don't know, I apologize if you didn't understand, but we're, not that it has changed regarding the traffic study. Our our opinion is that when people come out on the Prospect Street, they're gonna head towards four ninety five, one forty and four ninety five, eighty percent.
First night, you said the majority, according to your traffic study, I turn right and go down Prospect Street.
No, I'm not saying that, that's not, that's not, they're not turning right.
Well, that's what your traffic study said, according to you, so now they're gonna turn left and go down through Bellingham.
They're gonna go up to one forty, that's where the.
Well, the only way they can get there is through Bellingham.
Eighty eighty percent of the traffic, as I've said, the way they've now analyzed it, it's going. Out Prospect Street towards Route one forty to four ninety five.
One forty is the other way.
So Maple, so Maple. Come out and take the left. You're going down.
If you're left, you go to one foot.
Right, right.
And that'll be addressed up here again.
Unfortunately, the Prospect Street only goes um. Maybe a thousand feet or so, then it turns back into South Maple, so the town line is like. Messed, not messed up, but.
But that's not the issue.
Well, I'm just saying, when you talk about Prospect versus South Maple, the traffic is going towards Route one forty and four ninety five. Eighty percent.
Gentlemen in the back in the green shirt.
My name's Frank Morse.
Why, sir?
And I'm pretty good, he's getting old, I've been in your shoes many times. I built Fox Monroe in this town, nineteen eighty four. I was thirty two years old. Did some crazy things.
Yeah.
We had a nice planning board, there's a guy named Phil Hura, he used to come here, sit with the German Shepherd at his feet.
I know Phil.
And he was a hot guy.
Yeah.
The one with commerce at the end, he says, Frank, that was the best thing that happened to this town by you connecting one twenty six and Center Street, so they're going cross through. Makes it easier, alleviates a lot of traffic jams, and it makes sense. If you were to take my subdivision now and look at it, with all townhouses lined up on both sides. Wouldn't that look a little hideous, instead of having a nice colonial home sitting there? Appearance wise, aesthetically, you understand me? So let me finish. Sometimes smaller is better. What was wrong with that nineteen house subdivision, that looked pretty nice to have laid out there?
So, well, let me answer the question first, as I said earlier, I'm not a townhouse guy, all right? I never wanted to build townhouses on this property, but it did. Allow three, two or three different options for development of the property with special permit. That interested us, but it only interested us in a lot of ways with uh. You know, to do something that that uh fit into my vision, as you say.
Okay.
So um, it was never our intention to develop this property just strictly as a single family sub. With always our intention to do something more. Um, in need, let's say, for the for the town, meaning a little bit diversity and public chances. And I I don't remember, I I don't know if anybody remembers this, but I would say to them, why do you always, why do you want only townhouses in the town of Bellingham? You wanna give an opportunity to someone to do something different that would give people a choice between apartments or townhouses. And that's really where we're at, so I'm certainly willing to go back to something a little bit less. Dense, if I can do it the right way, but I'm not, I'm not interested in a two acre, if you. If you read the master plan that the town put out, it's right in the first pages. Two acre lots are not conducive to family or. I forget the language, what what, you have, what I had in mind, it's the first, first or second page of the, it's not a good thing. Basically, what the master plan says, so. I'm not putting those items, those aren't my words, those are the towns' words, so that's why we're at where we're at.
But in this consensus, I'm finding out what's wrong here, people hearing a lot of houses, a lot of traffic, and people getting like this, they're getting, they're getting nervous, I understand that. If you were to look at your first project, which I don't know why you've got it on the table. You built some beautiful homes on Prospect. Those are nice homes, you didn't give those away, those things make the town of Belling, that's Bellingham, good revenue and tax.
It's all Franklin.
That's Franklin, I'm sorry, there, I got, there's a lion, I cut in it. If you were to take the square footage of one of those houses versus the other, what are you doing, doubles or quadrants or any elements?
So, but if you would do the opposite and say, instead of two acres, all you need is forty thousand square feet, then you may get my interest.
But when I did Fox Run.
Yeah.
Let's call it building, forty thousand something, or two thousand square feet, you know, I didn't have to do two acres because it was zoned for that, I didn't ask for it, but I was in the right area, that was an old farm. I had to play with a lot of contours, there's eighty feet from one twenty six to Center Street difference in elevation. Had a lot of pot water to play with, once it finally caught up and all the grass was growing, it worked out fine.
Yeah.
You and this here, you've got water up to here.
Where?
On some of your areas, you have to do some some bonding, some drainage.
We we have to do what's required of us under the stormwater management regulations.
Did you think of taking the, what's that street that comes from? The Blackwater down into the woods, down into the, into the property, and make that a one way only?
Well, now you're talking about. You're talking about something that nobody wants.
I just asked.
Okay, no, we.
You discussed that.
We're we're just looking at limited disturbance along Blackwater Street, along the part of the property, the parts, the town's conservation land, which people obviously don't want that touch. But certainly putting a road there is not, from my perspective, or from anything that I've heard, a good idea.
I'll get up your back.
No offense, but thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You should still be building if you're ever want.
I don't need to greet anymore.
Come on the right, Frank, I, I believe I can, woman, I'm sorry.
That's all right, every help. Michelle Gah, fifty five Cross Street. So I just want clarification and just an ask for future as well, when you were going over the stats for the school, you gave a percentage, can you give actual numbers? Because there's twenty percent of a hundred is a lot different than twenty percent of a thousand.
Right.
So can we get an idea of what you're talking about there when you say they've declined and how many students are gonna be coming in?
That's what we'll do at a meeting, we'll have the superintendent give us updates.
Okay.
All right, well, go ahead, sir.
Okay, well, these are official, these, February, February twenty third, I got these statistics. So kindergarten through uh third grade. The population decreased by a hundred and sixty nine students from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty four. Fourth grade through seventh grade, it decreased a hundred and twenty six students over the same period. The high school. The high school eighth to twelfth went up twenty four students. So when you talk about the whole school system. You're down two hundred and seventy nine. Two hundred and seventy nine students. Over the entire school system. I can only look at the numbers, I I don't know the reason why they went down or or, these are just statistics that are published every year. By the school department in the town's annual report, they were provided to us. Uh, and we've included it in a package for information.
And how many children do you think will be coming into these homes?
You know, I don't have the answer to that, we have a study being prepared at this point. And we'll be providing that to the planning board, along with a whole bunch of other information, that's one of the pieces of information that we. Asked our consultant to provide, and we will have that, and they'll have, they'll have the reasoning or whatever things they come up with.
Yeah, I'd like to know.
Are we?
Ma'am. Just to let you know, um, I'm fortunate to serve as a board, on the Board of Advisors for Nell's Folks. And we are looking, the schools looking at a dip in college age students over the next several years. And especially annoying. So you're saying it's not just Bellingham, it's it's other towns. But we'll, you know, we'll have Ms. Marano uh at some point in the future.
Thank you.
But thank you for your question. Yes, ma'am.
Um, just to kind of follow up with what she just said, and I know this.
Did you just add, could I just add your name?
Oh, Rayanne, I live at thirty nine fourteen Street. So there's also a huge development going in on the other side of the lake, on Cross Street, I know it's not you, it's like, I don't know what it is, it's at least fifty houses. And they're big, they're, they must be like at least three bedroom houses, um. That's also going to, and these houses are already built, that's also gonna have a huge impact on traffic pollution. The schools, like she was saying, wild, like, all that land is now, like, wiped out. I mean, have you thought about what that's gonna do to the lake, having that huge development, that's already gonna affect the town and the traffic, there's a lake that's up the other cross street now. That is gonna stop traffic, um, I mean, between the two developments, it's gonna be. I mean, in my eyes, like detrimental to the town, like, what, can you think of any, like, on top of that, can you think of any? Positive things that this is gonna bring to the town, I know my friend asked it last time. And you didn't really have much to say, like, what, what is this going to, what are we gonna benefit from this?
Well, first of all, let me go back to your, uh, the other development. Included in my package, you'll see a a traffic study that was done by. At the request of the planning board that evaluated the traffic coming down Lake.
People don't live in these houses yet, those are all empty, they're just being built now.
They they, they develop. Build, no builds, future build type projections. All of them, in that particular study, they all recognized the same issues that we are talking about with regards to Lake Street, Prospect Street. But there was no. Um. Condition of that approval, that project to do anything on Lake Street of of at that intersection. So there was an opportunity to do something at that point, but they, it wasn't, it wasn't conditioned that way. So what I'm suggesting is the benefit to the people or to the. The lake side of things is that when we extend the sewer, I mean, every, all of you folks have septic systems. Those septic systems, I don't know whether they're in compliance today with Title V regulations or whether or not they're cesspools or whatever, but all of those septic systems. All contribute to the pollution that goes into the ground and ultimately into the lake, okay? Uh, when we put the sewer in, it's gonna allow the opportunity for people who are close by, that the sewer runs by, to connect their housing into the sewer. To avoid the septic system. In addition to that, the. The area that you're talking about, you live in this area right here, so right now you don't have sewers, right? You don't have, you, as you know, so all of these causes right now. I would doubt very seriously that they're in compliance with any kind of Title V regulation. Um, but if we run the sewer and design it properly, there's, it may be an opportunity at some point for the town. To do a sewer program to connect into that sewer system. And let's get away from, I, I, we already know that the money is the money, the town's gonna benefit financially from this project no matter what.
But I I don't mean money wise, I meant more like.
So I'm trying to bring out the quality or the uh intrinsic type of benefits that we can't control traffic, traffic is there now, we have a problem with traffic. Um, and if we think the traffic is going the other way, um. I don't, I don't think that we're gonna have the kind of traffic that you're talking about coming from the other side of the lake, they all wanna go to four ninety five too. They're gonna come down Lake Street, take a, take a, a left on Prospect Street, go on one forty, they're gonna go the same way that we're going, but we're not gonna be impacting anybody in that section. But town, we're already past that, we're down beyond that point, so. Um, the traffic, when the project that is on the other side of the lake, that's all serviced by town sewer. And that sewer is very important to protection of the lake. And that sewer is very important to protection of the lake. But there's no sewer on this side of the lake. We're hoping that with what we do is going to make it available for the town to do something down the road to sewer all those houses that are there. And it will require, you know, some trade-offs for homeowners as well to get on these streets, easements, other than maybe, so it's, we can run and be divided properly. So those are the key elements that I would say are important to the town. I was just reading a story on Lake Mass, Masson Park out in Hopkins, Hopkins, and they deal with some of the similar situations. Pond is weeds are growing and things, vegetation is going in the pond, they're worrying about how to control it. Well, you control it by not allowing nitrogen and all the other stuff that goes in on your lawns, the septic systems from going into the groundwater and into the, into the lake. Right now, there's, you have probably no control over what you put down on your lawns. You probably can put down any kind of fertilizer that you want and you have no stormwater management. You, I don't know what the policy of the town is regarding salt and sand, you don't know any time. These are all policies that should be implemented to limit the, the impacts to the pond, to the lake. So I'd be happy to get into it a little bit deeper, but I mean, we think those are all positive improvements.
And I guess my last quick little follow-up is that you mentioned that that lot of land is pretty much like a barren sand pit. And it's, that's pretty inaccurate. It's there, the amount of wildlife, logs, birds, animal marks, tracks, plants, everything that you see out there is like nowhere that I've seen in this town. So you call it like a sand pit, that's, I mean, there's a lot of wildlife out there.
Calling the area that we're developing mostly assumed.
I know, but you said there was just nothing out there. It's not true. There's a ton of wildlife out there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Jump on the back. Oh, you're okay. Yes, ma'am.
I'm short, so that's why.
Okay, that's fine.
I probably I'll link you out. I just want, I want, I feel like this whole area is in Water Resource District. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. But when we have requirements for changing resource areas, no person shall remove, fill, dredge, or alter any resource areas or land in or under such areas within a hundred feet of any isolated or contiguous freshwater, wetland, marsh, wet meadow, flood plan, bog, swamp, lake, river, pond, stream, creek, blah, 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 without filing a notice under, of intent under Fifth Bylaw in the Massachusetts Wetland Protection Act.
That's correct. You've read the regulation. That's a, that's a bylaw, Town of Bellingham Well and Protection Bylaw that will be filing an application for notice of intent as required by that regulation.
And has anybody like talked about the DeOvalay District shall apply to all new construction, reconstructions, or expansion of existing buildings, blah, blah?
Right, well, this isn't an existing building, but I mean.
No, but it's all new construction.
Believe me, we've read all those regulations.
No, I understand that, but we have all read.
Okay, well, I'm glad that you're bringing it up because now we'll know. There is, if you read the regulation from the Conservation Commission, the Well and Bylaw, you'll notice that it says within a hundred feet of. So we've designed this so that all of our units are outside of that hundred foot.
But has anybody on the planning board walked this area?
We have not yet, no.
Do you know how much water there is in there?
We, we're aware of that.
There's a lot of water and this year especially because of the rain we've had. But there, there's, that would make a big difference in the Water Resource District.
Number one, we will look into it. Timmy, that's one thing that you'll be concerned with moving forward. The board will be concerned with it.
This has been ongoing for a while. I'm surprised no one's walked through this area.
Well, let me just say this, the problem the planning board has, but we've had at least six sidewalks with the Conservation Commission over the past two years. So people who have jurisdiction, it's the Conservation.
Does the Conservation Committee have meetings on this?
Sure. They, they also reviewed the subdivision at the same time that the planning board reviewed the subdivision. Sort of like on parallel tracks is what town wants to happen. So we've, they've, they've been on this project, they've walked this project going back, we filed plans in twenty twenty-one. So this is not, it's nothing new.
One more thing. You keep talking about the water pipe that they replaced on Lakeview. They only replace the small section at the very end. The rest is the old pipe. The road is pitched up in the middle. I don't even think that pipe in the middle is as big as the one they put in. So I don't think the water coming from there is going to work.
Well, I have the plans of what was installed that were given to me by the DPW.
And how far down did it go?
It goes all the way down through that property.
But it doesn't go all the way down Lakeview. Where does it start and where does it end?
So this is the plan for the property or the water system. So this is, this is Black Marsh Street right here. And this is where Lakeview Avenue starts, goes all the way down at the end of the Lakeview Avenue where the last hydrant is, takes a right turn and goes up the hill.
That's the new part, right?
Why? No, according to the plan.
It's not all new. Not at all.
Okay, well, it really.
So you're, what I'm trying to say is you're projecting stuff and I'm just trying to correct it because.
We will find that out. I appreciate that and I'll follow up on that, but we're going to do flow, as I mentioned, the flow analysis to make sure there's adequate flow there. Maybe we have to replace the whole auto line in order to do the project. I don't, I don't know, so.
So it wouldn't help the fact that the road is only good for one-way traffic and people wouldn't be able to get to their houses?
Yeah, that's a problem.
Thank you.
That's why we're not proposing through traffic through Lake Street.
Just to be very transparent on this. He said he's walked through that facility. You asked if we walked through it. We haven't. Simple reason is, we did not get the presentation until last month. If the board had done a site visit, that's considered a public meeting. And we did not want to do any site visits prior to the presentation. We will determine to have a site visit down the road. But doing it premature, premature to walk through that area until we had his draft. Yet as time goes on and once it gets peer reviewed, we will look at his final version and do at least one site visit. But it's not because we didn't want to legally, what it constituted a meeting and we don't want to violate the open meeting law by walking up there prior to having a proposal in front of us.
Thank you for your time.
It wasn't other lasers.
Thank you.
Just one second, Jeff. Ted on, online, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Can you state your name and address?
Yes, Ted Lowen at two eighty-six Prospect Street. Lou, I'm the guy who said bait and switch, if you recall the informational meeting a few weeks.
Your name is actually in my mind.
Look, at the end of the day, when you proposed twenty-three single-family homes, that was the, that was very, that was the least disruptive. You know, you have a right to develop your land, just like we all do if we could. That would have been fine, the most least disruptive proposal. Now you switch and bait to a hundred fifty-six townhomes, adding at least several hundred additional cars, there's wetlands, there's flooding now with all the additional development around. How on earth are you going to convince Franklin to give you two easements when they have to take care of that road, deal with the traffic, the police, the fire departments on both ends? Because people will cut through to King Street, not only one forty, if they think one forty is all backed up. How is that going to happen?
Well, Ted, nice to see you and nice to hear from you again. All I will say is that we've inquired with the town of Franklin as to what permits, if any, are required from the town of Franklin. And we have not received a response. So at this point, we're proceeding along the lines that this approval comes from the town of Bellingham.
So you're looking for Bellingham's approval before you go to Franklin?
No, you didn't hear what I was saying. We've inquired to the planning board and the, and the DPW of the town of Franklin to advise us what permits, if any, are required from the town of Franklin for this project. And we have not received a reply.
Understood, and I think the silence is deafening.
Don't be the stranger.
I wish you went back to your original plan.
Ron.
Yes, hi. Sorry, that was muted there for a second. Rob, Rob, Rob Carlson, twelve Kramer Meadow Lane, a road, geez, lane. Yeah, so the, the only benefit that I, I hear proposed is that our tax base increases, which is not really a benefit for any of the residents. I mean, if you're injecting three hundred-ish new residents into town, just increasing the tax base, you're, you're increasing your spending anyway because now you have to support three hundred-ish new residents and locals don't really see the benefits of the town's tax base increasing realistically when you're injecting that many more people into town. And it, I might be a bit of a downer, but all I see is more people in a town that we like to be small, more traffic, more noise, less wetland, less forest, less privacy, and just more congestion. And it seems that the more time goes on, the more of our wetlands, the more of our wooded areas, our open areas just gets consumed by high-density housing. And this, this just seems like another case of that realistically, like it's, why, why does it need to be high-density housing? Why, why couldn't it be thirty single-family homes?
Well, if the zoning permitted something other than the option of two acres zoning and townhouse development, then it might be something to talk about, but those are the two choices and we've chosen the second choice.
And you, at the beginning of the meeting, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I forgot your name, or I, I didn't seem to catch the beginning. You, you, hi, nice to meet you. You said that, you said something along the lines of it would be nice if, if we didn't have to do this, but Bellingham has to do this. Do we, do we have to do this?
I don't, I don't know where you got that. I do not see what that.
I'm, I must, I must have misheard.
No, sir. When I have, I'll get to your, what you thought in there, okay?
That, that's my mistake, I'm sorry.
That's right, I picked it up. I picked up on that.
That, that's all. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, I see a, I'm, I'm going to follow this up. Gentlemen, maybe our, excuse me, arson, A I C I C O N E.
Yes, hi, it's Allison Sukon and I'm at.
Yeah, I didn't see the Allison.
That's okay. I'm at thirty-five Black Marsh Street, so I'm actually getting sandwiched between these two potential developments. And just to clarify, the Harmony Home Development that's going in right now is a hundred and three homes, four-bedroom homes, about eight hundred thousand dollars apiece. I think like twenty of them are occupied right now. They're, they're in the process of building fifty more. I'm assuming that that's why the light went in on South Main Street. Every day I travel both ways out of Lake Street, going off, you know, into Bellingham to one forty. I go to work the other way because of the traffic, even with that light, I'm now taking a left off of Cross Street, going a side street, residential street to get farther out on one forty. And even when I get to that street, there's traffic on both sides of one forty. So one of my questions is when that development is finalized, what kind of traffic study would be done to get an accurate read on where we're at before a development like this would be going in? And my second question is, given the amount of flooding that has happened this year since the large homes on Prospect Street have gone in, including a bridge going out on Prospect Street, Lake Street being flooded to the point that the street was closed and like that's literally the only way for the residents here to get in and out, what are people's thoughts about why that happened?
Okay. Thank you. All right, you can answer one part, I'll answer the second part.
Well, I'll answer the part about the Prospect Street culvert and Lake Street flooding. Well, principally, the reason was that the town of Franklin opened up that roadway, closed the roadway down, opened up the culvert so that the water was free-flowing through our property out to Lake Street. Unfortunately, the culvert that's on the Lake Street is undersized for that size of a flow. So of course, what happens is if you're in a bathtub and the water keeps going in and you only have a little drain, the water's going to keep backing up and eventually it'll top the tub. So that's essentially what happened there. I met with the acting DPW head. We discussed it, why they're supposed to, you know, they did it under an emergency filing, so they didn't really have paperwork to document the calculations that we would normally have to go through, but essentially that's what happened in that instance. And yes, we've had a tremendous amount of torrential rainstorms during that period of time in December, so you can't just open up the floodgates and then expect nothing to happen downstream.
And so was it?
That's essentially what happened.
Is it, so was it just a coincidence that those homes were built, the, the land was disrupted and now this flooding happened? I've lived here for eight years and neither road has ever been closed.
The homes on Prospect Street have zero to do with the water. We dug test holes there ten and twelve feet deep and see a drop of water. So those homes, anything that's on that property, that water goes into the ground and it gaves in the ground and you'll never, you never see it. It doesn't come off of the property, it doesn't flood into the wetlands or flow into the wetlands. It goes into the ground and the ground absorbs it because of the permeability of the soils. And there's no water there that's related to any of this other stuff that you're talking about.
Ma'am, in regards to the traffic study, we'll analyze that when it's appropriate for the future growth of Harmony and this development.
And do you know when the Harmony development is supposed to be finished?
We, we don't, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
We don't, but we will project out, we will use, we will use studies based on the number of bedrooms anticipated occupancy and anticipated children. I guess that goes with occupancy. But that's something we will look at.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask what kind of project Harmony is? Is it a forty B or is it a?
Well, it's Market Valley Homes.
Excuse me?
Market Valley Homes.
Market Valley.
Yeah, but then there is. There's some inclusionary housing on there. It was vetted under the ownership of Fattard.
Right.
And they sold it and we've had very strong, good relationship.
Yeah, no, they've done a nice job. I'm just curious how they got the density that is.
It was something we approved based on the application from the Fattard Development Company. And we put a lot of conditions into the approval, I mean, substantial.
Oh yeah, it's a big development, I like.
And what you're saying is what we did over the period of years, yeah. That project has been flowing around for a long time.
Can I just make one more comment too?
Yes, ma'am.
The developer had mentioned earlier that the townhomes would be priced in the five hundred thousand dollar range so that would be applicable for young families, divorcees, seniors. I personally don't know anybody that fits that description that would be able to afford a five hundred thousand dollar two-bedroom townhouse. So if the town is looking for. So, if the town is looking for more affordable housing, which obviously lots of people are struggling, and that's not obviously the developer's fault, I just think it's something for the town to consider, would this actually provide our residents housing?
That's the first time I've heard that number, I think that was shared with you at that meeting. Well, I will say that I, I did mention that number tonight as a means of simplifying the calculation for tax revenue. We, we have no idea what the market's gonna be from this project, or if this project gets approved. But we, I will say that there are, what's our inclusionary requirement, ten percent versus sixteen units? I don't know how the town handles it, but those are affordable units to people who are presumably from Bellingham, that are, can't, can't buy a home, or not qualified to buy a home, that's at price elsewhere. But, but keep in mind, you know, I know you've probably heard about this housing crisis that we get going on in Massachusetts, and all these mandates that we got coming down. You know, as I said, I think I've said this before, that Bellingham is in a great location. Has two interchanges on four ninety-five, there are plenty of land. Plenty of people that need a place to live. So, Bellingham's the next town down the line. And I think you probably, in some cases, you would be happy about it if it's done properly, but that's where you are. So, it's a, all these things are related to providing housing for people, for your kids, or for people outside of Bellingham. We can only deal with what is within our control, and that's within our control. There are a lot of people looking for housing, and Bellingham is the next, the next stop on the road. Allison, to pick up on that, when Harmony was first starting to sell, it was significantly under eight hundred thousand dollars. And they've had, the market has been very strong in town of Bellingham. One, because of, you know, people talking about taxes, our low tax rate is advantageous to people moving to town. Being one of the lowest tax rates in there, and thanks to the management of this town over the past thirty years. So, and there are a few more people, gentlemen over here.
Hi, Jack, thank you, Jack Jeremy, three twenty-six Prospect Street. I'm finally gonna agree with Lou, his new homes had nothing to do with the culvert. I live right next to the culvert that broke. Unfortunately, that water backed up into my basement, caused some twenty thousand dollars in damage. Fighting with the town for the past five years for this culvert to be fixed. I know when they, when they finally fixed it and opened it up, they knew that the water was gonna flow downstream into Bellingham, and that was gonna cause some, some damage, but they could get the thing to flow. My second thing is, I talked to Lou earlier, and he brought it up again, about the moving the road, Lake Street fixing and moving it over a little bit. If it's not broken, don't fix it. I lived on Prospect Street, built my house thirty years ago. If you took a survey back thirty years ago, you probably had a thousand cars coming down the street. Now, a day, now there's nine thousand cars coming down the street a day. If you fix that street and make it bigger and wider, more cars are gonna come down the street. It's gonna be more attractive for big trucks to come down the street. It's gonna make it worse for, for everybody, for more traffic coming down the street. I know this, yesterday morning, I tried to get out of my driveway at seven thirty in the morning, it took me literally fifteen minutes to get out of my driveway. So, more traffic, if you put that street right in front of my house, I'm never gonna get out. So, it's gonna, one, it's gonna drop the value of my house, nobody's ever gonna wanna buy my house down the road. But, again, if it's not broken, we don't fix it, I think.
And thank you for clarifying the responsibility between the town of Bellingham and Franklin. Gentlemen in the grave?
Doug Martin, ten Dupree Road. Lou, you had said that, so you're gonna have a sewer pump station on your site?
Yes, we're gonna.
That's gonna collect all the, or?
We're, we're collecting, we're, we're having a pump station down on our site in this, roughly in this location, hasn't been designed yet, but it's in the process of being designed. And that, that is gonna pump sewer through what's called a fourth, fourth grade, up to, as far as we can get it, so that there'll be gravity to go down. Further we can make this gravity from going that way to across it, the easier it is for the town at a later date to design a system that is also gravity, that will connect into the last manhole that we put in there.
Yeah, no, I understand that, so, so all that flow, and then the potential other flow from the surrounding streets, would all go down to Dupree Road at Prospect, at that pump station right there?
Correct, yes.
As the, I assume that the town's gonna have someone look into the size of that pump station. Originally, it was built by Fattard to serve Canada Light Village, and then the homes surrounding it. Now, we're including this development, potentially the other homes, and Harmony Hills are all coming down to that one station that's on my property.
Yeah, so typically, whenever you have this kind of an upgrade, and you'd have the pumps probably need to be upgraded, and maybe some.
Yeah, so, so my question is, is the town having a?
I feel pretty confident with the DPW department, we'll address that with them in one of our meetings.
Okay, thank you. And my other question was, and I know we'll probably go over it, but can you just highlight how you plan to take care of stormwater retention for the impervious area on your site?
Sure, I did have it in my booklet, but I don't have a blown-up plan of that. But, so, we have certain regulations from the state and the town related to stormwater management. And each of this site, there are several, what we call stormwater basins that are in on the site. The water goes, is just channeled into those basins. The water goes into the ground, there isn't a drop of water that's coming out of this site after this development. It's all, the soil conditions are so pervious that the water, you put grass water in the ground, it dissipates.
Can you use the points of where you have those on your site?
Well, it's kinda like, you have a booklet or? I highlighted in, so I can figure out where they are. So, there's a, there's a basin right here to take care of this flow. There's a basin right here, as you cross over the wetlands. There's another basin here, another basin here, and well, there's like four or five of these basins that have all been sized accordingly to meet the state regulations and the town's regulations. And, oh, there's another one, there's another, there's a basin here, basin here, basin here, basin here, and a basin there. It is all, all the water, the stormwater system is designed with catch basins piped into these basins. There's no outlet from the basins. Sized for what we call a hundred-year storm event.
Bottom question, has the formal NOI been filed with the company?
Unfortunately, it hasn't, my consultant had a family issue that prevented him from completing it, but. One question, Mary Ellen, do you have a question?
It's the cursor.
Or something, that's the cursor, okay. Jeff, I know you asked, I'm gonna ask.
Oh, Don, so, Don Coelho, five eleven, it's okay, five eleven Lake Street, Bellingham. I just was appointed to the Conservation Commission this week, so I'm just coming up to speed on things. You had mentioned that the Conservation Committee had come through your property multiple times. Was it for this proposal, this new one you're presenting, or was it just for the, you know, the, the prior one, the twenty nineteen?
No, they have not, they have not seen this proposal yet, we haven't made an official filing with them. But, just so, it's, all of the resource areas that are within the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission have all been what we call a wetland line or a boundary line. It's all been reviewed, and it all has been, you know, verified that those are the lines. In other words, what you see here in blue is not going to change. It was the same on the previous plan, it's the same today. Those, those, those calculations, those flaggings are locked in for at least three years.
Okay, but the basins and some of these other changes aren't.
All we know is that the, what the Conservation Commission wants us to do, we've taken that information and we've applied it to this plan. So, for example, they want us to be, I don't know how familiar I would regulate, but there's a riverfront area. We need to be outside of a hundred feet from the river. We need to stay out, try to stay outside a hundred foot above the zone. So, those are the things that we tried to incorporate into this plan. And when we have an opportunity to present it to the commission, then we'll answer whatever questions we have.
I look forward to that presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, sir, thank you for stepping forward. At Bellingham Conservation.
Oh, my pleasure, thank you.
I, I appreciate it. What you may wanna do is go back to the minutes, and you can find the minutes when they did the watch, who's, who watched last one, that housey proposal. And it's now in, being living.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, John Holden, Victor Street, we're on the top, I think we're gonna see what all your development.
We're up there, okay, excuse me, you're in this area?
Yeah, Little Labor, so you, you've proposed a emergency access going through one thirty-seven Lakeview, which is Paul's property, you know, very close to the street there. A question about what the purpose of that is, other than the punitive emergency access, because twenty feet isn't wide enough for a fire truck, it's got two sharp S-curves, you gotta climb a sixty-eight-foot hill. Your development, your grading is a two-to-one slope and running sand, so the whole thing's gonna cave in on your houses. It's not real. The twelve-inch water line doesn't exist in the town record. We spent two days in the town, can't find it, it's your proposed water line. So, the real question is, what are you gonna do with that road? Is that for your proposed clubhouse on the lake?
Right, let me, can I answer other two questions? First of all, twenty feet is the minimum width of an emergency access road for the mass fire regulations. It's twenty feet. Secondly, when, when the town granted, when the Paul, the previous owners granted the easement to the town, the town also reciprocated by granting him slope easements on the town's property to, because it was clearly contemplated, those issues that you're talking about, that the grade is so great like this. So, it was contemplated, I don't know if you can see on the land, but there's grading that's gonna take that down quite a ways. And it's gonna allow, you know, those things that you're, those issues that you're raising, you can't bring a fire truck up like a steep slope.
You, you're gonna have to slope back like a hundred feet and foot retaining the walls in.
So, we, we have the permission from the town, recorded easement, to cut into that slope on the town's property, to bring that grade of the road down. I think it'll probably be like an eight percent or ten percent grade when we're done. But twenty feet is the minimum width of a paved emergency access road. Up to the fire department, whoever to review that if they want it. Then we can do it, if they don't want it, I'll take it, I'll take it off the plan, I don't care. But it's, I'm not planning on putting a clubhouse there, that's what you're wondering about.
It was in one of your earlier proposals, and we hadn't seen it since.
No, it never was possible. I mean, there's an existing house there, it could end up staying as a ground quarters, or, or, you know, someplace where we'd, where they may wanna store equipment, or have an administrative office. Rental, I, you know, haven't gotten that far yet, but there's been no plan to use that as a clubhouse of any sort. Quite honestly, I'd rather put these units there overlooking the park, it's a great spot. I mean, so, there's a lot of things that come into the mix, but those are two issues that we've, we've addressed. We know what public safety is looking for, and we know what the requirements are for providing that.
That's just, just a clarification, please, the twelve-inch water line, is that a proposed water line?
That is, that is there.
Solar area?
No, that is there, I have the plans in my office of what was installed.
Like to see that.
And, you know, I don't know what records you, or who you talk to, but if you talk to the DPW, they'll give you the plans. Or if you give me your email, I'll email you.
Yeah, like to see that. One other question, if you don't mind, and I, I appreciate your responding to these. If the town were to grant you this, this emergency access road, if they felt that it was prudent and appropriate, I like the fact that you're talking about putting a gate in there to restrict vehicular traffic, but what about pedestrian traffic? What's to stop five hundred people walking, four hundred dogs, from your development down the wall, scenic Lakeview Drive, up to the town beach and back? That's a, a major concern for some of our, for some of the residents in the area.
That, that's an interesting question, because a lot of towns now are dealing with this dog-walking dilemma, where the dog walkers are collecting their dogs, and they're driving them down to the town's conservation land, and they're walking their dogs. So, I don't know if the town has a dog-walking regulation, but there's, there's nothing other than me saying, no pets in the development, and that would only be the restriction that I could do. But, there's other areas where they can walk. That maybe, in the course of our, the process of getting approved, that we create a trail system. Either, there's plenty of gravel, cock roads and things through the site, that could be used for that kind of purpose. And, you know, just an education there at that point.
We'd like the town to consider, as, as part of the review process, if this road wanted, obviously, the suitability, but two, the impact to local residents could be tremendous.
We will look at that, it's part of the process. It will be in perpetuity, if it gets that far. Now, again, we're talking down the road. We have a lot of bigger issues with regards to traffic that we need to address. But that, in perpetuity, that will be an emergency road. And it's a great question, it's, for a time it's come up, we'll try to address that as best we can. There were some other people there, go ahead.
There was a mention of the mass, the town master plan, and then the ownership of the trolley path. The town master plan said that they wanted to preserve that historic trolley path. Lou tells us that he owns it. We've got conflicting information about the ownership of everything in that neighborhood. There's gonna be conflicting markers of where the property lines are. We would really appreciate the town being able to have their own survey to confirm where those boundaries are. We would contend that the town owns that trolley line all the way out to Cross Street, and all the way to at least the brook that they crosses that. So, we will contest the ownership of that, I don't know exactly how we do that, but we would say that that's not accurate.
We will have an opportunity, have that survey, to hear multiple owners. And again, that, that will be, everything in the peer review will be looked at.
Great, thank you so much.
Yeah, we don't take it, we, we're here protected by the power.
Gail Millgram, seven oh three Village Lane at Hartsford Village. I'm very, very concerned about the people who live on Blackmar and Lakeview, and I live in North Bellingham. But I do have a deep concern for them as far as emergency vehicles getting in and out. And I was wondering if there's, would be a chance that we could hear from one of the representatives from the fire department as to how they feel about this whole project.
Good evening, Chief Bill, obviously Bill, I can't fire that. Right now, we're not at liberty to comment, we haven't seen a set of definitive plans. The access roads, as Mr. Petrowey said, are our request, and we will continue to monitor those access roads for emergency ingress and egress. So, for me to sit here and tell you exactly where we stand, until we set, see a set of definitive plans, I, I can't give you the answer.
And you meet the second Thursday of every month?
We meet the second and fourth Thursday of every month.
I don't hear you.
The second and fourth.
Second and fourth?
Yes.
And if we wanna know what's on the agenda for your meeting, can we go online?
It is posted at least four, eight hours in advance. You can go online, I believe there may be an opportunity for any questions you might have asked to ask the complaining office.
Okay.
Definitely keep an eye on the town website, you can find that information.
Please, please do that. Go ahead, we appreciate you coming here this evening.
And so the, uh, previous lady's, uh, question about land ownership, we can ask Lou. My name is Alfred Millgram, seven oh three Village Lane. Um, do you actually own the land or do you own options?
No, I own the land.
And that can be verified with the, uh, Norfolk County deeds.
Yeah, yeah. The, the plan, the bracket that go back to nineteen oh seven. Uh, there's probate filings that were made by the heirs of the person that owned it back from nineteen sixty-seven onward. Um, so I'm, I'm certainly questioning, but you won't, we won't be in a dispute over the ownership. Believe me, yeah, we, we own it.
Lou, what was the name of the family that owned that, that you bought it, that had the rights?
Well, originally, if you really want to know, the story, the railway went bankrupt in eighteen ninety-seven. They sold it to a guy named Kelton. It was various pieces that ran through Bellingham. Kelton didn't pay his taxes. The town foreclosed on it for back taxes. This gentleman Crooks, who a lot of these properties are, streets are named after. Crooks bought those rights from the town for the railway.
Was that Ellsworth?
Ellsworth Crooks, right. So Ellsworth Crooks, when he sold the land to Barney, he reserved the railway for himself, thinking that maybe that something would happen to him. So Ellsworth Crook, Crooks dies. And he had two da, and the wife died too. He had two daughters. One daughter was alive still. Fourteen. And, um, we contacted her. After, you know, obviously, we did our title search renew, who handled what? Her teen was still alive. We contacted her. She got an attorney. We, you know, said, hey, would you like to sell this? Well, she said yes. And we bought her half. She then gave, her attorney gave us the name of her sister. Um, I can't remember her name. But anyway, she had passed away eight years ago. And in her will, she left everything to her husband. So we went back to probate. We got the husband appointed as an executor. And the husband sold his half, their half to us um, as well. And referenced by plans that were on record. Uh, so that's a long story short, but that's really kind of what happened as well. But to get to that point, there has to be a lot of title research and beyond my expertise, but we hire people to do that kind of work.
I, I'd like to wrap this up. It's gone on a lot longer than we anticipated. There's a lot of items on the agenda. There's one more person online. Then I think, sir, you may be the last person to ask the question. Hi, Christina?
Uh, actually, it's Arthur Luna, three ninety-nine Prospect Street.
This is Christina here, okay.
That's my wife. She's next to me. All right, so.
I've made a few mistakes in that tonight, so.
That's okay. I, I own one of the big homes that were developed. Uh, uh, it was, the land was originally from this developer, but it was built by another builder. Uh, I have severe erosion issues on my property. Uh, mainly the water, the rainwater that comes from Prospect Street, uh, just draws a lot of, uh, channels per se on my lawn. And, uh, so that's what's expected as far as conservation and erosion, the lack of trees that we have. So we need to do, uh, repair all the landscape, so landscape. I see this project also, it's not something that's gonna take a year. It might take five years. It's gonna be developing phases if it's a hundred fifty-six homes. So we are going to be suffering erosion during all this time. Uh, is, what can, if this goes through, what can prevent this erosion from happening?
We will get that process out as we go through this. Um, I would encourage you to, uh, come to all our meetings. And also come to the, um, conservation meetings. You can raise it with the conservation department. But, uh, if you want to hear from you, I can't speak right now how we'll address it. But we, we have a lot of large items that we need to address.
Okay. I, I have another question specifically for the board. Uh, I contacted the town of Franklin regarding the traffic issue and the, 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 uh, concessions that they did for, uh, the original develop of twenty-three homes or nineteen homes, whatever it was. And they did, they indicated that they wrote a letter to your, for this board, uh, mentioning that they don't want the development to, to have, to use the access through Prospect Street. Uh, I just want to know from the board if you have confirmed you received this letter?
We did receive the letter.
Okay.
And if I'm not mistaken, I don't want to speak out of turn. I believe the applicant challenged that letter with the town of Franklin.
Mr. Chairman?
So, I, I, I'm not a lawyer. I can't address that. But he, he, I believe he did challenge that letter.
I, I will say that the town Franklin did send a letter to the planning board asking for additional traffic-related repl, studies at a few different intersections. One being the intersection of Prospect Street and Washington Street, which is way down the other side. And, um, there was a couple of other uh, requests for additional study, but nothing that would have um, prevented from, um, you know, that required us to file permitting like that. And quite honestly, I can't get his name, but he, you know, he lives in the town of Franklin, so that's a, you know. Fortunately, that erosion is from Prospect Street, not from us.
Also, we're, we're gonna listen to him.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think he should.
Because he's, you know, an active, um, resident. I, I'm gonna go out and run here. I think some of the people in this room are from Franklin. And we encourage that, uh, because it's gonna impact them. Uh, although, uh, the town, people in Bellingham are like this. Uh, our responsibilities don't stop them. So we, we're gonna look out for people in the chase there. I'm looking for myself. I feel pretty comfortable with the, the rest of the board.
Mr. Chairman, when that comes up, Prospect Street and Washington Street, that's a concern of mine as well, whether it's, I know many residents from Bellingham can use that intersection. There's a daycare up there as well. Um,
the, the only thing I can say is, you know, we did traffic counts. We did, uh, traffic movements. How many cars go right? How many cars go left at that intersection?
Two different projects and.
Well, you'd be surprised what's going there now is not a lot, but. We'll.
Now, we buy every day too, twice.
Our, uh, traffic report, I think, covers existing, future build.
Mr. Chair, we have one more question right in the front.
Oh, yeah. Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Right. Uh, thank you. I'll, I'll continue the Franklin thing. Uh, Tim Perdoff's here, we're resident of Oxford Drive. Um, the question has come up, I think, for every meeting that we've had on this project so far about the crossover between Franklin and Bellingham permitting. Um, back in January, I asked a question and I suggested that, um, he will need uh, some form of approval from the town of Franklin to use the Franklin portion of this property for access to um, this project, which under Franklin zoning is multifamily and is not allowed in our, our one zoning district, which you planned across. Access to this project is considered under Massachusetts law to be in the same use as the project to which it, it, it provides access. Uh, I understand he's contacted some folks in, in Franklin about this project and hasn't heard back. Um, not sure if you're contacting the right people, but, um, in my mind, you will need a new experience from the ZBA, so the planning board is not where you should be looking. Um, you might want to look to Brian Terner in the planning department. I've been in communication with him, so he is very familiar with this project and this board is receiving communication from him as well. Ultimately, my question is, with this crossover, everybody knowing about it, and ultimately, this project lives or dies on that access, which relies on Franklin's property. So what steps, if any, is, is this board perhaps through staff communicating with town officials in Franklin to really dig into that issue and understand what approvals, if any, he does need and what the timeline is for him to do that, because we can come here every other Thursday night for the next twelve months. But unless and until he gets that access issue resolved, we could all be wasting our time.
Let me step back and try to answer your question. And anyone on the board can hide it. During the process of building the homes, until he had, um, rented permission from the town of Franklin, we weren't going. We have ongoing discussions right now with the town of Franklin. As we move forward, those will be enhanced. And as you heard me say earlier, we, we don't stop at the border. I believe the access to Depot Street may be critical for this project.
Depot Street, that's where the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Depot Street, my mistake. Um, Prospect Street. Thank you for correcting. So, um, we, we are looking at that.
Oh, I, and I, I appreciate that. I mean, ultimately, this board could get as far as granting all the necessary permits. Um, and he could proceed to build, and suddenly we're left with, uh, the zoning enforcement official in town of Franklin is gonna have to put a stop work order in order to enforce, um, you know, Franklin town, uh, zoning. And why, that, that just makes, you know, it's kind of.
So Franklin must have a process to vet out, um, you know, development. So, um, they, they would probably circulate it to all the departments and have them weigh in on the request by Lou to cross the property to get into Bellingham. So I don't know what Franklin's process is, but if he's been in contact with the planning board, I'm sure they would be putting him with the zoning board, but I don't know what their process is, so.
Yeah, and I mean, they, they have a technical review committee, but that doesn't really kick in unless and until an application has been filed. Obviously, that hasn't happened that.
For his, for his.
I mean, you know, and, you know, hopefully, he's, you know, reaching out to staff.
Do you mind if I ask if you're an attorney?
I am.
Okay. I think what you should do is provide a legal opinions that I will give to my attorneys and you will vet it out that way. But I, we don't necessarily agree with you, obviously, but ultimately, as you say, we're wasting, no, we wouldn't be wasting our time because the, this matter, if it becomes a problem or an issue that it's adjudicated at Superior Court or Land Court or Superior, uh, Appeals Court, Supreme Court, all those things are in the mix when you get to that point. So, uh, I, I don't believe you're accurate. Okay, but if you want to provide a, a legal opinion to the board that we would then be able to review. How would you do?
Excuse me, Lou. Um, I hate to interrupt you. Um, that's not his job as a citizen. Okay, what we will do is, uh, old Dr. Our Town Council will discuss with the town of Franklin. I will, although I value you as an attorney, you're, you're a resident.
I'm here as an individual. I'm not representing anybody in this room.
Yeah, representing a lot of her. So for him to do that, I think, um, it's not prudent. And we will deal with our town council. And we'll make sure, uh, as in the past, that the town council from the town of Franklin is, um, advised. And again, I, I, I recall you challenged some of the verbiage and some of the actions from the town of Franklin.
Well, let's just put it this way.
Am I wrong, sir?
No, that's right. You have a law black and white, and then you have personal opinion, which is not in black and white. It's subjective. So when you have the law and you think that the law is being misread or misinterpreted, you have the right to file appeals. So we felt at that time, as we feel now, that the way the law was being interpreted by Franklin was inappropriate. We filed litigation. The court agreed with us.
I, I didn't ask if the court agreed with you. I simply asked if you appealed the decision for the town of Franklin.
We did.
Okay, then. I just wanted to clarify.
Lou, how many feet of road do you have to build to get into, uh, through Franklin to get into Bellingham?
It's roughly a hundred forty feet, a hundred forty. And then, and in this particular case, it would really just be a glorified driveway, but, um, it's really not a change in news. It's a relevant issue, so.
So if you apply for permits tomorrow to Franklin, they'd issue you a permit?
Uh, well, they'd issue a curb cut permit for sure.
Okay, um, this has gone on much longer than I wanted. Um, we're, we have two people online, one person in the room. Um, whether, that's the last question. Sir, hold on for one moment. Maybe, uh, Roger and Sue may ask, you know, your question. Roger and Sue?
Yeah, how you doing?
How are you?
I, uh, my name's Roger. I live on Dorothy Ave. I've been driving Lake Street to Prospect for twenty-five years to go to work every day. And I have never once seen that road flood out until they broke ground. Can you answer why?
I can't, sir. But we will look into that with, uh, our DPW department, and if needed, we'll resurrect the incident that happened this year with the town of Franklin.
So you can't answer why? I can tell you why. They're disturbing the ground. You're clearly getting plenty of residents that are telling you it's not a good idea, but you don't care.
No, that's, that's not what I said.
No, it's what you guys have been saying all night. You really don't care what we have to say.
There could be further kind of truth. All right. You know, we, we've listened in over two hours.
Yeah, you wasted everybody's time. Because he's clearly gonna go through with it anyway. He doesn't have permission to make a road from Prospect Street to his construction site, but he's still doing it.
Sir, that will be looked through during the cell process.
So maybe by the next meeting, you'll have more answers. Actual answers.
So that's your interpretation, sir?
Oh, yeah. And I'm sure many other people have the same interpretation.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Have a good night.
All right. You too, sir. Um, last, um, question from, uh, online, Roger, and then the gentleman over here. Roger?
It's Roger.
Yeah, I just talked. We just talked.
Yeah, it's.
Oh, you have to say it twice.
There's a Roger and Sue that have their hand up.
Okay, uh, Roger? Roger? No, we haven't spoken to them.
No, they.
No.
Are they the same people?
Yeah.
Okay. Gentleman over here.
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess I had kind of an obvious question. We've heard Lou say that he prefers to build single-family homes, but it's, uh, not permitted under the town bylaws. And we've heard that the Carmody Hill uh, development had gained an exception from the town bylaws. So I guess my question is, has a conversation taken place to potentially get that exception? I think we can all agree, it's not that there's a project going there. It's the sheer size of this project, and if we can downsize that, have a whole lot less resistance.
I can answer that, Bill.
Okay.
So first of all, the, the other subdivision, it doesn't look like that had an exception. There's two different zones. Lou, your project, I think, is an agricultural. The other one is suburban, I believe. Yeah, the other one is suburban zone. So two different zones are gonna have two different dimensional requirements for the different uses. So that's why.
So.
I believe.
So then is there the potential for the town to grant an exception to this developer for that particular site, or is that just not an option with this particular zone?
It's just a whole different process.
Yeah.
So it would be an overlay. It would, so, one would require maybe town meeting.
Yes.
You know, um, it's not that easy. So the dimensional requirements, he is able to do a single-family subdivision right now. It's just not as many homes as he'd like to do, and that's where we're at. He could build a single family, but it's two hundred-foot frontage road, which is very costly, and it's, uh, eighty thousand square foot dimension, which is almost two acres. So that, that's why he's where he is.
Right. Wouldn't require either a town meeting to rezone or amend it.
That's right.
Of some sort to do that.
And that would be on him to take it to town meeting.
Well, well, it'd be up to the planning board to sponsor it.
Well, we, we, we need an app.
As it, to take it one step further is not only would it, would require a town meeting, but which would would take some time, but uh, he's also grandfathered in with regard to this particular kind of wealth. And so even if we change the zoning.
He said, build this.
And I understand that, but obviously Lou looks like a stand-up guy to me. I mean, just given his word in the room that he prefers to build smaller developments, single-family, I would assume that that would also suit to, to his needs.
Thank you. I'd like to start with comments from the board.
All right, I'll be very quick. Lou, you said you're expanding your, you want to expand the sewer along Blackmore, I believe?
We're extending it up to, yes.
Yeah, is that, is the location shown on the plans?
Not yet.
So on these plans, what is the, where's, where's the sewer going?
Well, on the plans, if you, oh, Jesus.
Because it doesn't look like it goes anywhere.
If you see the strip where the railway used to be, you'll see it noticed. It's a pretty foot wide strip. That.
So no need to be quick. So it's, it's just not shown on the plan yet?
Not, well, the strip and everything. Okay, so.
The sewer location is not shown on the plans, correct?
But the right of way is.
Okay, thank you.
So this right of way.
I got it.
That's the right of way right there, showing on the plan.
Thank you, okay.
The actual design of the sewer has not been designed yet because of the stage of the process that we're in.
Understood. Um, I know you mentioned earlier for your Culver Crossing that you're looking at about 500 square feet of disturbance in the wetlands, which I understand is a conservation commission issue. However, there is a flood zone A associated with that wetlands.
We'll be in compliance with all of that.
Have you, do you have any compensatory storage in these plans?
Yeah, that's, is, I think if you look at the stormwater report, it's all in there.
Okay. Very good. I think, for now, I think that that's where I'm at. I know we're, I think, you know, once this moves forward, we're going to get peer review going. Because there's been a million questions asked tonight, all very valid that I think are going to be answered with traffic and stormwater peer review that needs to happen sooner rather than later. But that is my opinion.
Rob, on the sewer, that's a good point. Lou, I would caution you to maybe think about before you offer sewer to the existing residents, depending on where you put your pump station, would depend whether or not you could tie in that side street because the town doesn't allow tying in on a force main. Just, you know, I'm not sure.
That's why we, if we design this properly, we want to push it up so that its gravity is quickly as possible and so that the town would then be able to, we don't want people having to enter our force main, in other words.
We don't want force main.
Right, so it'd have to be a certain situation. I mean, you could end up with a pump station on Lakeview Avenue, pumps the water up, pumps the sewer up to where we, at the intersection of Blackmore and.
That you would install, you mean? No, an extension of the sewer. Yeah, well, that's why I say be careful, you know, promising anything because. No, I'm just saying, but you mentioned that they would be able to possibly tie in and solve a problem.
If you recap, rewind the video, you'll see that the town may be able to.
Yeah, depending on the way the placement of the pump station, that's all I'm saying.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't have much to say. I just wish you had led this two years ago.
So in recognizing that this is a preliminary discussion on the second one we had, I don't have any other questions at this time, but I agree with Rob's observation that, you know, this, all of the points that have been raised today online and here are valid concerns that require investigation just so everyone understands the process. It's, it's a long and clunky process. It's very legal and it's very technical. Would behoove all of you to try to the best that you can to understand the process and the criteria by which we have to evaluate this process because some of the points that you raise may not be something that we can consider legally. So I would encourage you all to look into that process and understand it. And we throw around some terms and sometimes I think it can be confusing. For example, when we say peer review, and we might have talked about this, spoken about this previously, the applicant is required to pay for an engineer to evaluate their promises and their plan and to, to vet what they're saying is actually viable. So that, that process will unfold as we go on. So that's when we say peer review, we're going to have somebody, a traffic engineer on behalf of the town, look at what he's saying. And we're going to have a, an engineer look at the runoff and where water's going and all of those considerations. So there will be many meetings in the future that are, that are unique to just that topic. One or two nights or three nights will be traffic. So I would encourage you all to be sure to attend all of the meetings. Separately from this process also is the conservation. He needs to file with the conservation board. That's a separate process. We often run in tangent with them because of the overlap of the issues that we look at. They will also have a peer review and they'll address a lot of the concerns that you have. So I would encourage you all to also attend the conservation commission and truly get the full picture of what this project and its proposal is. So that's my two cents for now.
And just to pick up on something you mentioned, the peer review is our choice on the town. Who decides who to do, who does that?
Lou, as we, as we move through this process, I'd like to ask you to seriously consider these new homes on Prospect Street there. They're going to be impacted on all four sides of their homes. The traffic on Prospect Street, the new driveway going into this complex, the new homes behind them, and then the improvements to Lake Street. So as we go through this process, I would like to have a conversation about how we can consider their quality of life because they're going to be significantly impacted. Thanks.
I'd like to move forward with peer review as fast as we can. Do we have that scoped out yet, Bill? As a funded? I don't have anything else. I'd like to ask the public. The people are at the meeting. Did they ask, did you ask him to reduce the density or the number of buildings on the property in the diagram that you made? Is that discussed?
Yes, sir. Charlie Feely, to him, my wife and I did not attend the neighborhood presentation, but we did watch the online. We still watched the audio at the end of it. The reduction to single-family homes, to my best recollection, was never even mentioned as part of the neighborhood presentation.
Okay.
Personally, that confused the daylights out of me because this, understandably, has changed so much. I'm not sure half the people in this room know what we're looking at anymore.
Okay. Well, let me address that as quickly as I can. It's going to turn into a long evening, which is fine. He owned the land. Trying to change in the bylaws, outlaw in town homes. He reserved his right to build. And to do that, he needed a proposal for the homes. It was a placeholder. We treated it like it was actually an actual development. By submitting that, what I call placeholder, it reserved his rights to do multi-family units, which based on the town bylaws are now triflexes. So he was able to reserve his rights.
Okay, so the last planning board presentation that we attended in February.
Yes.
It was at that time that that bait and switch comment kept coming up.
Correct.
Because of this so-called placeholder of 14, 16 homes, whatever.
Correct.
And then when Franklin and Bellingham residents start actually attending the meeting, it's gone from the 14 or 16 or whatever to this multi-family.
That's, that's putting things a little out of context. What he simply did, I asked for the homes, let's see, he reserved his right to come back later to build towns.
I understand that. My comment was.
We did not, at that point, view it as a bait and switch. Now, one of the concerns I have, and he heard it from other board members, I think the density is too much. And that's why I have a little reservation in doing peer reviews because I want to get down to a number that it feasible or comfortable. If we get to a number that we're not comfortable with, we'll go ahead and do the peer review. And as he alluded to in regards to the town of Franklin, there are other options that he has available. But I, I personally think the density is too much. I think other board members mentioned it, but it's been a long night.
To answer your question, at that meeting that we had at the senior center, I did ask Lou about the figuring of the density and the 10,000 square feet per bedroom. And he had mentioned in that meeting that of the acreage that is owned there, and he said it tonight, that of the, of the land that he owns, 45% of the land is actually going to be developed. And the other 55 is going to stay the same. And the density is factored on the whole 100%. And I question whether it should be factored on the actual area that's going to be developed. Because if he owned 500,000 acres and factored it on that and was building on 25 acres, it'd be pretty dense.
I could use another.
So I, to answer your question, I did ask that question.
The future meetings, I have a concern with the density. I think other members did as well. So that's something we're going to work through. The reason I have reservations much during a peer review is in the process of this, the density could change. So that's, I'm just trying to protect the, you know, the town in that regard. That's all I have for this evening.
Very, very briefly, Bill, did we hear in the February meeting from the board that the town was not prepared to undertake a peer review unless and until the concom submittals had been done because otherwise you're looking at an incomplete proposal? Is that what we heard?
I, I do not know. Purposely, we did not attend that meeting. I want that to be.
The last, the last town meeting. In February, the last town meeting, I don't say, and maybe I heard something wrong, that the town did not, was not going to undertake peer review.
We're going, we're going to go.
You have a complete package.
I think what we said was we will work parallel with the conservation commission. I believe that might have been my quote, and that is still our objective.
Two different reviews as well.
Okay, but we want to work parallel. Although there are recent changes.
When is the next hearing?
For conservation?
No, for this.
We're going to sign that in a couple moments. All right.
Mr. Chair, I believe for the peer reviews, if you want the application to be whittled down in density, that is up to the applicant, but otherwise I don't think we can hold up the peer review if it's not going to change.
Okay, and I don't think it may. I don't think it will change.
Well, that's up to Lou.
The aspects of the plan are not going to change based on density. The stormwater is not going to change, the sewer is not going to change, the water is not going to change. I, I don't think it's practical for you, the board, to not do or commence peer review. And only after the peer review is done, if they point out aspects of the plan that are non-compliant or not feasible or problematic, then we talk about, well, what makes the plan compliant, well, not problematic. So I can only ask, as I said from the beginning, usually the process would be for the board to obtain a proposal or scope of work from a peer reviewer. Because let's face it, we can't come to the next meeting. Sure, sir. We're going to talk. We, we know the process that we go through. I think, if I recall correctly, we had some concerns with the number of homes. And you just informed me tonight, you don't care. Well. Is that correct? Let, let's just say that. No, you just said that. I don't need to argue. Okay, well, let me, your, your bylaw permits one bedroom every 10,000 square feet. It permits that. Right, so that's what we've proposed. Doesn't anyone have to agree? Not saying you have to have a reason for not liking it other than just thinking that it's too dense. Okay. So, as I mentioned earlier, you can make the density go from 312 one-bedroom units to three-bedroom, four-bedroom units. It all has a balance between the benefit or the not benefit to the town. So those are things that can be discussed as the process gets forward. But none of the infrastructure is necessarily going to change. So I, for the life of me, I can't understand why you wouldn't stop looking at the drainage or the water or the sewer or any of those things that we've proposed. As I said, I like to work parallel with the conservation. I, I agree with you in that. And unfortunately, we weren't able to get the notice of intent filed. But if, if, it doesn't necessarily mean that the board can't develop a scope of review, put it out to parties that you're interested in having as a peer reviewer. And so that it's ready to go when and if we do get our ducks lined up so that the board is comfortable. Or for, from a practical standpoint. We ask Rob a question. Getting up on the sewer, on the plans, to be having a peer review?
No, there's, there's no sewer leaving the site on the plans. Apparently, it's in the process of getting designed.
So, so you can't send it out to peer review?
You can send it out to peer review.
And they're just going to call that out?
Yeah, I mean, that, I mean, our hands are currently tied if, you know, the applicant doesn't want to change the plans. The plans are in front of us. The process is to send it out to peer review. And Mr. Petrosi has a point that, you know, the infrastructure might not change. But I mean, typically, we're going to have a definitive plan in front of us that is also commented on by the different town departments as well as the peer review. So I know from DPW's standpoint with utilities, I think really, I want something in writing. I'm sure everybody else does. Public safety is going to be very, very key with all of this. And as we said, you know, you don't have a definitive plan in front of you. Here's a definitive plan that we'll put in front of you and this is what we're going to want comment on. And I think we need to move forward with that because to the point of the public here, I mean, there are a lot of questions and I don't want to drag this out just because there hasn't been a filing with conservation. It's probably going to take time for us to get scope together anyway. And there's a good chance that we are going to run this parallel with conservation, even if we get started now. If that makes any sense.
Is there anything else on the plans that are missing that are glaring? Send it out to peer review. We have access to Franklin, access to Franklin?
And we'll get legal opinion from town council with that. We just need to request it. I think.
Sewer's not, sewer not being on the plan is kind of a big thing.
That is a big thing for me personally, but I know.
I'm looking for, what are the other big things?
Ground water.
Stormwater, groundwater, runoff. All this stuff isn't there, right?
Well, no, we have a stormwater report. We have.
Traffic.
We have a traffic report. We have, so we have that submission. I was just making the point with the sewer that it's not on the plans. I couldn't find where it was going. So that was the clarification. Took a while to try and figure that out. But basically, I think that we're kind of, it seemed like at the first meeting, the idea was me with the public, see if we can get this, you know, some type of agreement between neighbors and see if there's a way to do this cohesively with each other. It sounds like the meeting happened and we're kind of stuck with the proposal that's in front of us. So it would make sense, I think, to move forward, peer review, on that purpose. I know, obviously, we've heard frustration from a lot of people on, on Zoom and, you know, I think a lot of people are thinking that we haven't really moved forward. I think a lot of people are thinking that we haven't really moved forward with this since the first meeting. Which we haven't, because we were expecting, I think, a little bit of. Conversation with the butters and making sure that things are moving forward to maybe make people happy, I think.
That's what I had.
Well, I think we're at the point now where, you know, discussions are made, this is the application in front of us, if. Mr. Petrosi wants this to be reviewed by the town, we're.
Okay.
Asking you shall receive.
Do we need to have? So he hasn't filed in front of conservation, and we typically do a, a parallel track with. The scope gets put into the same peer reviewer, and there's a scope that goes forward. Town staff could probably write the scope for both of this already, right?
Uh, yeah, I definitely, I would say so. Um, and I think not necessarily as far as. Sometimes there's different peer reviewers for different things, so.
Yeah.
I anticipate that for this project, where, for us, we're probably going to have stormwater traffic. And probably a zoning bylaw type general review. So, that'll be our scope, and it's up to conservation to make their scope. I imagine they're going to want to look at delineation. Although it sounds like that was already looked at, um, with the previous project, but they're also going to look at. Their wetland regulations, our wetland regulation bylaws. So, I mean, the, the scope's there, we just, we got to get it going.
I, I'm just, I'm just disappointed. Uh, when we spoke about the density, we all thought it was too much. The neighbors thought it was too much. And he hasn't changed the density.
Yeah, what I'm kind of, what I'm concerned about is the fact that we asked. The applicant to meet with the residents, to get input from the residents, to incorporate into the plans. To then go forward, and what I've heard is that there's been no change to the plans that. We, that we're considering right now, after having met with the residents, and the whole point of meeting with the residents. Was to gather input so that the applicant can then make some changes to the plan. Yes, so at this point, I, I'm, I don't know. I'm a little disappointed in that one.
I, I am as well. Um, he's indicated twice that this is the plan. After meeting with the residents for a couple hours, I, I had hoped for. I know some people are not happy with the fact that we couldn't answer some of the questions, but we needed what we asked.
My, my cut, I'd like to hear what the rest of the board is, but send it to peer. Let's send them to peer, get the scopes out, build the scopes out, and move forward. I'd like to hear from the rest of the board, though. I think that's reasonable.
Uh, reluctantly, I, uh, agree. I was hoping we could have had, um, a smaller plan. Some plan with changes, and I think everyone in the board has the impression that, um. Based on what the applicant says. He heard from the residents and didn't make a decision, so reluctantly, I, I agree, so as Dr. Solis' project.
I agree, move forward.
I agree.
So, uh, one thing to the sewer, um, I know he hasn't finished the sewer, the design of it, um. And he plans on pumping a tip to pre-lane, to pre-lane.
Can I just say one thing about the sewer? The sewer within the project is fully designed. The only thing that's not is a force main, which doesn't really, really require much design, it's put a pipe in the ground and a pump.
Well, my point is, um.
So it's the off-site design.
What's it going to do to the pump station that's already designed for, you know, the calculation part?
Yeah, that's, that, that's a DPW question that we raised with DPW at this point, to determine. The feasibility of that pump station, whether it needs to be upgraded, repaired, how old is it, with the size of the pumps, that sort of.
My point is, if we send it out to peer review, you shouldn't be doing the calculations for that, that should be yours first, and then peer review, check it.
Usually, my friends and peer reviewers will say this information is missing, we're going to be providing it, and they'll review it.
Yeah, the sewer design is going to be peer reviewed by separate entities with the DPW. However, for site plan approval, you need to show sewer going somewhere, or I guess, so.
If it's not on there and you want to add it up, that's. I mean, that's what it comes down to. It's going to be more expensive to run peer review now than to have a full set with the whole.
Let me just say, if we got to the fire and police went up, a full plan set has been filed. Has been filed, there's nothing going to change relative to the infrastructure of this, of this project. Talking about moving units and reducing density, maybe that happens down the road, I don't know, but.
You're told it's, but what we're going to pay review is in front of us right now.
Right, so you have a scope, you put the scope, the infrastructure is not going to change, I don't understand.
We're all in agreement, I think, so it's, like saying, we stopped talking about it, it's getting.
Um, so what, what, what are we going to put out for period? Or do we, do we?
Town staff will be looking at the scope, and we, again, we'll be traffic, so, stormwater, and, uh.
Legal issue with entrance, access?
I would say that we should request legal counsel input, as we typically do with stuff like that. I don't know if it's necessarily something we vote on, it's just something we request.
As a rule.
Yeah, rule, um, so I, like, I don't think we need to vote on it, go into peer review, if. The applicant wants to initiate peer review, I think that that's where we're at, let's get it going.
And, uh, indicate a motion, how long? Four, six weeks, let's be realistic. He, I, what my understanding is, peer reviewers are very busy.
They are, yeah.
Extremely busy, and then we have to develop a scope of service to give to the peer reviewers.
Correct, yeah, probably two months out.
Okay.
You think that quick?
Yeah, I think that's.
To gather the scope, to, to get it out, get somebody's.
Yeah, I don't know how quick the town's going to be able to turn around the scope, but I would say, that's a, that's a pretty big project. It might be a little bit more than two months, but. I'd say two months.
What's rude? Did you get the scope done?
No, 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 come back.
Okay.
What I recommend is, um. Come back on, um, sing, signal popping night on May twenty-third. That give us more than enough time. That'll give us over two months.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Uh, I'm looking at either, uh, May twenty-third or May ninth. Two months, two months could live in.
And, and you probably need to worry about the continuation rates, no?
Correct.
Which is. I get a bad memory, so I'm not going to say the date, but.
We'll address that, uh, through correspondence with the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask one question? I mean, I'm looking for input, so. I made a proposal, just, just, just perfect example that I haven't gotten any feedback, right? I made a proposal to connect Lakeview Avenue to my development. Nobody said yes, nobody said no. Are you interested? Can you give me a decision? Or do we just let that issue just float in the air?
So we hear from the fire department, they don't let me answer.
Okay, well, it's only been on the plan for three months, I mean, four months, so.
You heard density, that, that was, that's a big one.
That's, but, if we're talking about.
Excuse me, chief?
Yeah, I'm listening, go ahead.
You want to answer that?
Not till we see this, again, a set of plans a little bit more, this is the first we've heard of it, Bill, so, no.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So the plans that we submitted, that you folks are going to send out to peer review, you have not given them to the fire department?
I, I'm sure, I'm not in the office every day.
Okay, so I deliver a full set of plans to your office. Hopefully, you will have a chance to review them and give us feedback, one way or the other.
I think all parties were hoping the density would be.
Okay.
It's called concessions.
Well, you don't.
Indicate a motion, the twenty-third, May, is that? Yeah.
And that's with, with the direction of town staff to, um. To run parallel with conservation, because it was applied by that point to conservation.
Okay.
That's, that's, that's the, so it's at the.
Ju- just, go ahead. We don't usually discuss the peer review, right? It just sort of happens, the staff does it, and, and, and it unfolds. Lou doesn't want to run parallel with conservation. I mean, that's to his detriment, right? There's efficiencies to do, efficiencies to be gained, there's expenses that he can save money on, all of that stuff. It's, it's, if he wants to do that, he does, he does all of this at his own peril, if he doesn't want to listen to the early input of the board. About density, then it's at all, at his own peril, because at the end of the day, the same people are going to be talking about density. So that is entirely within his purview, he wants us to look at his plan. What I take exception to, Lou, is that you give us nothing. And then you want us to weigh in on whether or not we have emergency access, we won't be, there won't be any flexibility in your party.
Whoa, 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 we gave you nothing. We made a complete filing.
I'm not talking about that, Lou, I'm talking about the fact that you want. Safety to weigh in on something you're proposing, that you may or may not change your plan, because you want to change your plan in the course of peer review. We're asking to look at your plan now in terms of density, we wouldn't know, you don't have to.
It's all about, you know, you, you file a plan, you distribute it to the department heads. The department heads make comments, get back to the planning board. We have not received any comments from any department heads. For the filing that we've made, it's, don't put it all on us, we made a complete filing of accordance with your regulations.
Well, you're looking, you're looking for an early opinion on something concerning your plan, so you don't have to necessarily progress using that plan. We're asking for the same courtesy to look at density, and you won't give us that, but you take it or leave it.
No, no, what I'm saying is that you're looking for feedback, you went me, I had a, a neighborhood meeting for information.
It was lip service.
Nobody's come back to me and said, oh, we don't like the access on the Lakeview, so how would I be able to change the plan?
Okay, so. No, no, that's, that's not correct.
I'm perfectly happy taking it off the plan, I said that many times, so, anyways, you folks decide what you want to do, if you want to hire a peer reviewer, fine. Uh, the Conservation Commission is under a different set of timelines. We filed a notice of intent in a week, they're forced to have, they have to have a hearing in twenty-one days, and that process is going to be well ahead of. Your process, May twenty-third, so, um, if you want to run parallel, try to work with the timelines and the jurisdictions of each board. Perfectly happy to do that, but I will remind you that the last review that we had, where you shared the same peer reviewer. It wasn't very beneficial to us as the applicant, because they spent our money. On issues that were completely unrelated to the approval process of the planning board.
And that's another issue, sir, that you're now litigating, is that correct?
No, no, that's.
And you dropped that litigation?
I'm not litigating with the town, that litigation with the town has been dropped, but the D P process is still ongoing.
Okay.
Okay, but you, you can't have somebody who's. Spending our money reviewing something that's in dispute with the board, and then when it comes back to this board, oh, we have no more peer review money. Well, that's not, yeah, not fair to us, and there's a, there's a certain process that you go through.
Do you have a sense of when the decision deadline, are we even close, not, not at this point? So, I, I would suggest that we, we start peer review, as we know, we do have town council weigh in on the access. All of, all of the stuff that we normally do, and, uh, if there's no concern about this decision deadline, let's all move to continue this.
I was going to say maybe the ninth, and then as it gets close, so maybe you can put it out again, you know, depending on the, um.
That's fair.
You know, so I'll amend my motion to make this.
Make a motion to start with the peer review, next to me, May twenty-ninth. The peer review ideally could be parallel with conservation.
Yeah, but no, but no requirement then.
I do.
Second.
The end of the discussion, all in favor?
And that's fine, right, like.
Bill, I.
Bill, I.
Nick, I.
That motion passes, it ends. Also, I will, uh, we will reach out to Amy in regards to the decision deadline. And she will correspond with the applicant on any, um, changes. I want to thank everyone on Zoom, I want to thank everyone, uh, here tonight. I think you realize some of the reasons we could not get into specific answers, because we are waiting. For period. As you heard us say on several occasions, this is giving you a very long process. Some nights we'll talk about travel, maybe something else, stormwater, you will go down a bullet list of items. Remember what we were talking about, we will endeavor to keep the meetings on this topic, hopefully. To one topic, right, so, and we'll get it done. You know, we're approaching ten o'clock. You know, I, I really hope this will, you know, be done by the morning, so I want to thank you all. I know some people don't think we listen, but we listened to you all for almost three hours, and answered all your questions.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I heard a May ninth date thrown around, and it's the next meeting, the ninth?
It'll be here. Uh, please come, and also look at, uh, online for the conservation meeting.
Yeah, you heard twenty-third.
I want to thank as well Franklin, no, we made the motion for the ninth. That's two and a half months away. Almost three, it's all, I'm not worried. To the cycle, thank you for coming up. Thank you. I know, there's one more item here, I think, isn't there?
Yeah, 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 that's all I was going to ask you about.
Yeah, we'll get there. I'm, I'm putting you next. It's all right, so we're here for.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I think the people in the back room may be tired, but that's okay. Okay, we have, um, let's do the Prospect Street release of covenant. My understanding is, um, DPW has no outstanding concerns. Lou, can you tell us what's, bring us up to date on this?
Sure, uh, you know, we sold this lot to the builder who can building for us out on Prospect Street, and he went to the bank. All the other lots that we, uh, sold to him were all on the A and R plan. But this lot was previously shown on the definitive plan. We subsequent, subsequently got an A and R plan signed from both this board and Franklin. But, and Franklin covenant excludes it, the lot, it's not, we don't need a release from Franklin. But because there's a small portion of the lot that we've included. Of this lot, onto this lot for a septic system that's in Bellingham.
Yeah.
The attorney, the attorney, the bank's attorney is suggesting that it needs to be released from the covenant, so.
Okay.
That's really kind of it in the nutshell, it's just a title issue, uh, but he's already got a building permit from Franklin. He's already building, it's really just, um. Formality and a question.
Any comments, and strongly, your turn.
Does, town's okay, yes, council, DPW sent out.
Yes. Ron?
Good.
Does the definitive plan is the other project that you had with us?
Sure, that has the covenant with, with the planning boards. And in the covenant, typical covenant says, no lots shall be sold or built upon unless the infrastructure is built. Along, the road is built, then you come in to get a release, but this particular portion of that land that is in Bellingham. E- even though it was a former lot, it should have been, I should have excluded it from the covenant, but I didn't, it was an oversight of my part, but it's really kind of just. Well, I think it's about six thousand square feet, I hope the fact, well.
Did you give us anything in writing saying you're not going to build that other lot?
Which lot?
The one that you get the definitive plan on that you're looking for us to release the covenant on?
It's already sold. It's the Franklin lot.
The individual property, but the overall definitive plan. You given us anything that says you're not building that?
No, it's frozen for eight years.
And you're asking us to release part of it?
Listen, you can do whatever you want. I mean, it's six thousand square feet. There's, in my opinion, it's not required because you overrode your covenant by signing and endorsing an eighty one P plan. So in my opinion, not being an attorney, but in my opinion. It's already done.
It'd be interesting to see what our attorney would say on that topic.
It's been reviewed by town council, I'm sure.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure that I know it's been reviewed by DP.
Okay.
I would imagine town council has reviewed this. I know.
Okay.
We, we already signed an A and R plan?
Yeah.
That was on the.
You signed the A and R plan for this lot. It was originally contemplated that we were going to, we were keeping this lot out. Of the, of the A and R process because we thought we might use it for access. Okay.
Frank.
To, to the subdivision, right? But it turned out that the place where that access would be did not have the proper site distance and other things. So we moved the access down to where it is now. And we reserved this lot potentially as an A and R plan. To be built on that we had to go through cons- Franklin Conservation and all the other stuff. We filed an A and R plan. Both Franklin and Bellingham has endorsed the plan. The plan has been recorded. This is just a technicality from a title perspective. You're not hurting me.
I feel much more comfortable saying he wasn't going to, he's giving up the rights to the other plan though.
That's not gonna.
He's the bad guy. Well, I'm not the bad guy here.
Oh, you're frozen.
You wasted, you wasted a lot of our time.
Oh, my God, three hours. No, no, two years. Two years, it's been two years. I had to go through the process in order to get to this process. So please, I'm doing the best I can. Okay.
Now, there's a motion for.
And I.
Phil, I. I'm going to vote no.
Okay.
And Nick, I.
That motion passes in the form.
Phil, as time goes on, excuse me, may I call you Phil? As time goes on, you'll see that I'm much more reasonable than you think I am.
Okay.
But.
The whole board hopes I mention that Phil.
So you just don't start off where you want to start off. That's all I'm going to say. So.
I look forward to the experience.
Mr. Miller, Chief, Chief Miller will attest to my good natured cooperation.
We've already worked with you on a project, sir.
So we've got a feeling you do.
Thank you.
Who's the owner? Is anyone a notary?
Just has a.
So, so Mr. Cameron.
This one, is it?
Yeah.
Can I make your suggestion because the registry won't take a two sided copy that you sign? You have it notarized on one side and signed on the other side. Two, two different documents, but we have.
Okay, we will, um, thank you.
If you can do that. I don't need it tonight.
Uh, we, we will, uh, talk to Amy Monday. Okay, that's how you want to bring it upstairs.
Designate someone.
So we'll have a board members coming in. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Probably have something.
And, and by the way, uh, Amy said you got a legal opinion on Blackstone Street. Do you want to share that yet with me?
No.
No.
It's late.
Nice try to ask me, sir.
No, no, it's great. I'll see you next month.
Unless it's on the agenda.
April. It's on the agenda.
Season May.
Huh?
May.
No, no, Blackstone Street is on.
That's correct.
I'm going to be here for a while.
Okay. We look forward to it.
Lovely. Just doing, doing the best I can.
As are we.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. We also have, um. Lot releases for Bellingham sure. See DP has no outstanding, I'm sorry. I'm Mr. Apollon. How are you, sir? Can you bring us up?
Good evening.
Sir. And by the way.
Correct. You're not related.
Can you tell us what's happening with the lot releases?
Yep, we're just, uh. Progressing forward, uh, to, through the subdivision, you know, in, in kind of a uniform nature. And, uh, to keep, uh, progress moving and to meet deadlines for closings for houses that, uh. You know, that have been purchased but not closed on. Uh, we need these lots released from the covenant. Uh, a bond value has been set by the DPW. So upon vote of the planning board, we will furnish the board with bond certificate. Uh, we just need you to vote to, to set the, you know, to agree the amount that DPW has. Has granted and, uh, vote to release the lot subject to receipt of the actual certificate. Uh, only five. Only five lots in this next little stretch, just to keep us moving.
Okay. Give me, you know.
It's been reviewed and that's been compensation.
There have been compensation. I entertain a motion.
Uh, can I just ask one question? So of course, is there, has the security been delivered? Can we, like, do we have, um?
Steve, uh, the security for this, um, is that, um. Been delivered to the town or? Not on this phase that you're voting on because the, the insurance company won't issue the certificate until they have proof that the planning board voted to accept. The bond amount set by DPW. So you'll vote on the amount. And Amy will give me a memo memorializing the vote of the board. I will furnish that to the insurance company. They in turn give me a certificate. I give the certificate to Amy as a trade off to the lot release document that you, uh, will also vote on. So, yeah, procedurally, procedurally, we're on par. Uh, you just need to vote on the amount of the bond, uh, provided to you by DPW. And the second vote would be to release the lots subject to receipt of the surety.
So I would, I would amend your, I would ask that you would amend your decision. All right, so I'll move to, um. Approved, are we doing the release now?
Yes.
Subject to the receipt of, um, security in a form satisfactory to the town.
All in favor?
And, uh, ten seconds.
Phil, I'm sorry, second. All in favor?
Down the side.
Phil, I.
Phil, Nick, I.
The motion passes in the news. Now, your second portion of the motion.
Didn't we just do that or no?
No, you didn't. You, there were supposed to be two motions.
Okay. What's the second one that, that we?
Steve, I believe, um. What was the second portion of your motion that you wanted to make?
Uh, what was that motion? Was that motion for the bond or lot releases? I missed it.
Lot releases. We need you to have a motion for the bond.
Okay, yep. The bu- the bond amount, uh, set by DPW vote to accept that.
Subject to the, subject to the receipt of security.
Under the process. Second. Second.
Can I second it?
Second by Dennis. Any more discussion?
Down the side, Brian, I.
Phil, I.
Phil, I. Yeah, I.
That motion passes, you know. Uh, it's been a long, uh, can we take a, like, a? Hold on a break. What else do we have to do? On your list.
Good night. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good night.
Ten thousand minutes. If those minutes.
Oh no, there's something else in front of us. WS, can you bring this up? It's being over here.
Uh, if I may, I just wanted to point out that additional member of our team is online via Zoom, Tim Sullivan, with Colston and stores. Is legal counsel in case he has to study this evening. Just wanted to make sure we had everything available to us. Um. Uh, I think we, we've gone back and forth. I believe, uh, Jim had circulated um, some additional comments to us on draft. Uh, a draft decision.
Today.
Afternoon.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're fine with the edits that he has proposed. We really don't have any um, further comments to offer to the board and are, uh, happy to move towards any discussion.
Okay, yeah, what I'd like to do is, um, after you have separate motions.
Actually, there was, there was something on.
Yeah, let me forward it.
Okay.
I'd like to, uh, vote on the, um, flexible parking special permit decision. It's a short of the decisions. We had a chance to look at that. There were any, uh, changes in what last draft. Pretty, pretty consistent.
I move to approve the flexible parking special permit. Musters. We can discuss it or you want to discuss it first. I don't know.
I'd like to make the motion. Someone seconds to discuss.
Yeah. You have a motion in the floor. Dean's seconding. Rob, special permit.
Yeah, but I, Nick, you're voting on it, right?
Yeah. Oh, okay, okay. All right. Cause he's okay. Did you have questions?
No.
I thought you said you had a question.
I said.
Mr. Chair.
I got the other two.
I greatly appreciate you trying to make me feel special.
I'm trying to hear you in a minute.
I really do. But now.
I'm correct.
I know.
You call up the vote?
No, call up on the motion.
Calling.
It's been getting seconded. Yes, call up.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, okay. Dennis, I.
Brian, I. Bill, I.
Bill, I, Nick, ah.
That motion passes unanimous. Now, Phil, you have some things you want to write this out.
Yeah, so the last time we met, I know that there's been some circulating, um, conversations. But one of the things I was going to, it may or may not be included in what you've got in today because it was a debate. But the last time we met, I had a little bit of reservation about liability that we were picking up under number two. And the reason I was concerned about that was because the planning board did not party to to the basically the letter of understanding that you have with the town. We're not, not disputing it, not. Morandum, yeah. And it's, we're referring to it in several places in here. So it, it gets incorporated. What, what I was concerned about was the responsibility that we're putting on the town. And I talked to Jim about this and, and I guess I'm going to pass this out here like nine and I'm not sure if the applicants already seen, but I'll, I've not seen edits to that.
I'll bring, I'll bring an edit. It's been discussed, I believe.
I'll bring an edit over here. So just so you. So did anybody have it electronically if we? It's number two.
No, I, I, I don't have it. It's her.
So I'll have, you can miss this. But the, the concern is basically under, under number two. And I, you know, I brought this up before and what I've been proposed and Jim, Jim, Jim went along with this as far as not really changing too much of what we're asking for, um, is the wordings in red, which is basically, you know, to cover the full cost, da, 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 da. You can see what's there. My concerns about, you know, change orders and all this other stuff. I'm not arguing about who's financially responsible for it, but I don't think I want to bring in additional responsibility because the planning board says so. Um, by removing this language, I certainly would, would love to vote yes for this. Um, I think that this right here, you know, there's talk about change orders, shop drop. Um, the language, when I talk to Jim, the origin of the information sounds like it came from our former DPW director who was consultant on this project. And that's how it got in. And I would like to, and I need a second, I guess, move to pull that out of the decision in red. If, but. Yeah, if, if I may, I, I. Yeah. I think the entire paragraph is, is the, the, it's introduced with the phrase under the MOU. I think this is echoing requirements that are in the MOU already, which is where this. Yeah, yeah. So, so I don't disagree that it's there. It's just, I feel that it's adding responsibility to the board to basically endorse, endorse this. Uh, we're not a party of your agreement with the town. Okay, it may be in there. We're referencing the MOU several places in here, including earlier in that paragraph, but I would like to take that out of that because I, I just don't want to add responsibility to the town for these extra things, whether it's in the agreement or not that they have with the selectmen, the town, whoever, whoever signed that. I've never seen him, him. The letters. That letter. I, it, and I, you know, if, if I was in the business world and I was asked to review a contract and it's referring to this, this is an open ended liability risk in my mind. Whether we do it or not, and that's a whole nother question. I'm not disputing it. I like the rest of it. I would love to vote yes if we could get rid of that. I'm not.
We're not asking you to pick up the responsibility.
We're not changing the, in the first sentence there is still there is that we're going to go, we are, we're going to be.
Pursuing the public's grant opportunities.
Yep, period. And then after that, we're taking out what.
What, how, how does that tie it to the Route 126 corridor improvements, the, the grant opportunities themselves?
Well, it actually, it talks about the, the MOU in several places in here. And I gotta highlight it on this version that they have, but it, it does talk about, you know, of policies. I, again, we didn't, we didn't, this was language that was provided back to us. Yeah, so it came from our DPW director because I, and, and through town council eventually and through Jim and. Yeah, so it wasn't something you guys wanted in there. I'm not comfortable with it.
Can I, can I say that? Might help you.
Go ahead, comfort.
Um, no matter what we do or say, we can't bind the town, right? We can't make the town do anything. You don't have that authority. That's, that's one thing. The second thing is i- it's been vetted a number of times by town council, and I would be very reluctant to tinker with anything because he takes something out here and maybe screw up something down below. And the, and I do think that this sentence may have been added to, um, offset sort of the broad description of the beginning of the sentence. To the ongoing exploration of additional public grant funding opportunities like, well, which ones? The ones pertaining to this.
Well, I saw that as a list of costs that the DPW director said need to be covered.
Well, there's an exploration of additional, you got to read it in conjunction with the first part. I, I hear what you're saying. But I would be very reluctant at this point after I know that so many iterations have gone to and fro town council. They have looked at this, um, and I, and, and with the understanding that we cannot bind the town to do anything. This memorandum of understanding was entered into by the select board of town administrator. It's a done deal. Right? So we're just citing it in the decision as a way to tell a story.
I have you, I haven't seen it. Have you seen that?
Seen it along the way.
You've seen it?
Yeah, in this process.
I, I haven't seen that. And I don't, I don't know if the rest of the members have, but I haven't, I have not.
Don't recall.
You don't see? I haven't seen it, but I, I agree with Brian that the powers that be in town that, you know, are reviewing this, that had the MOU reviewed work with the applicant. I mean, I feel reading what you're taking out, I can understand. I totally understand where you're coming from.
Change orders, how many million dollars? Who knows?
Well, but, but the thing is, is that I can understand where you're coming from, Phil, but this, what's in parentheses are really, that's it. Really generic requirements part of consulting construction services that I understand, you know, being in the, the civil engineering field, I, I mean, I see it every day. So I, I look at this and it's just, this is what a typical construction administration scope would include. So, you know, I don't, I don't think it's handcuffing the town or putting us in an awkward position. I see where you're coming from.
You wouldn't see, see somebody saying, hey, they signed this, the planning board signed it. There's the signatures. There's what they're responsible for. That's the others. If it matters, I don't see it that way. I think that qualifies what the grant funding you're pursuing is about. And then later on, a couple of paragraphs down, it, it indicates that the town is unsuccessful. And the responsibility, there's absolutely an outcome here where the, where the town does not receive these grants. We, we understand that. That's been back and forth part of the conversation we've been having. I, I think this is describing the nature of the grant funding the town has committed to pursue. It is not obligating them to these costs.
So you're thinking it just covers the grant funding opportunities.
Correct.
Opportunities.
Correct. Consistent with the, with the MOU, which is why I think the whole thing begins with under the MOU.
Okay.
I don't believe it's. Okay, so I'm hearing you say that on a Zoom meeting that. Sure. All right, I would throw up my motion. You have to be comfortable with it. I just heard, so I I prefer having it out. Okay, but what the applicant just said, if it comes up, he's on the record.
No, doesn't mean a thing, but. Well, whereas if you, because the decision matter, but.
Third paragraph kind of address, you know. Yeah, no, I, yeah, I, I walked through this with Jim a couple of times and, and Jim, Jim was sending the language that I was concerned about.
Um. And this impacts two documents.
This, yeah, yeah, it does. Um. I, I guess I've heard at least two. Nick, I think. Right. Do you see anything on that? And do not, um, I, I've withdrawn my motion at this point.
Did Jim offer any more than just, I don't have any concerns? Or did he support you or encourage?
No, he's, he supported, he supported it by that. Basically, this is an email that he, that he sent to us. It's amazing. After, you know, I, I placed a call at lunch. He got back to me later in the afternoon. This is to address my concerns. This is what was suggested.
I think this language.
Maybe indifferent.
I think also when you articulated addresses as well. There's the scope of what they're going out to look at for the grant is to cover these costs. Doesn't mean the town is responsible for them, but they're trying to get grant money to cover those costs.
Yeah, then I heard the applicant say opportunity. It, it backs the opportunity. It describes the opportunity.
Yeah.
So to me, I'm going to withdraw my, my motion. I'll instantly put another motion in.
Okay.
Thank you for discussing.
Thank you. And we all have an opportunity to review the, uh, major business complex special permit, draft decision. You know, prior to this, uh, we shared with them some ideas. We'll get back to in a moment when we can, can process.
That's right.
The unit exactly. And also on construction risk management program. They've developed that in this part.
Uh, I don't.
Now we made suggestions on the case.
Sure. Uh.
It's not in here, it's not.
Yeah, okay. No, I think the, the camp process is, is we've agreed to that as part of the pursuit of the building department with
Yeah.
building department and all of that, uh, information, all of that stuff is there. I'm sure.
I entertain a motion for the
approve the, uh, the revised one thousand.
We have. I'm sorry?
The revised updated.
The, the decision in front of us is updated major business complex. Uh, special permit decision.
Right, just to clarify what we're approving the updated one ones with the changes.
Correct.
That's a lot I have in mind. Very well. I was just back up.
Motion in the floor, maiden second. Um, just looking to clarify, it's going to be, uh, very transparent for the, uh, person in the audience. We have closed the public here. So there's dead, no opportunity for them to apply. I want to thank you for coming here. Even one of the consistent soldiers coming through this process. I want to thank you for that.
You come for the vote?
I am.
Dennis, I.
Brian, Bill, I.
Bill, Nick, ah.
That motion passes unanimous. Then we have one more, American decision. We all have a chance to review that. Anyone have any questions or comments? I would like to call for the motion.
For the revised and updated plan.
Yes.
Yeah. Decision.
Yes. Second, second, any more for the discussion? The call for the vote.
Dennis, I.
Brian, I.
Bill, I.
Bill, Nick, ah.
And motion passes unanimous.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Mary, line processed. Appreciate your input. Paul. Thank you for coming to the meetings. Well, much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can't really say welcome to Bell, but.
Usually we do. It's surprising you're not voting, you're not voting here.
Let's just do it anyway.
Welcome back. I think we skipped a minute. Okay. Motion during journey.
Second.
All in favor?
Dennis, I.
Bill, I.
Bill, Nick, ah.
Rob, I can't even vote, don't care.